Okay, are you live yet?
Yes, we are. Sorry, like, we couldn't get sound to my ear, my headset. So now we're ready. You can go ahead and get started.
So Mayor, before we get started, that's okay.
Yeah.
I'd like confirmation that individuals that receive the initial link will get sent to the proper link if they try to activate that.
Are you asking me?
Yes, or?
Everything's been updated on the website.
And then if they tried using the original link, it takes them right to the proper. That's crucial.
I have to ask that just a moment.
They cannot be left in a dead end if they try the original.
If needed, could we add someone on city staff stay in that other meeting to direct anyone who signs on to this meeting?
There would not be the original meeting, I believe, Councilman.
Okay.
Actually get into on the originals, my understanding.
And Scott, it's interesting when you go to participants, it says attendees nineteen, but total one phone call in listener. So does that?
That's, that's always Linda. There's always someone with a phone number. So.
Okay.
So if they, if they go to the agenda, they're gonna get to the right link. I don't know if I can definitively answer you on what you're saying. That's just what IT's told me. That it's, it's corrected. It's all there. I don't know.
All right. Okay, if they, if they click on the original link that was sent out or the corrected link, it will take them to the corrected link?
The corrected link is the only thing that's there.
I don't, can people hear me? This is Connie.
Yes.
Okay, because I think my computer locked up, so I'm gonna go out and come back in.
Okay.
Because I can't mute and unmute.
Are we all here now? Mayor, are we ready?
Now we'll see here.
All right, everybody. I think we've got all the Snap Boos taken care of. I want to quickly note the time. It's four thirty-three. We're gonna quickly begin the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board meeting, and I'll ask the clerk to please take role of the board.
County?
Yes, here.
Boson?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto? Your Honor, that's six present. You have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
I'll move approval of agenda.
All right, it's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? There are none. The item passes. Item three is a hearing and adoption of the amended Municipal Housing Agency Annual Budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty of twenty twenty-one. Any discussion?
Three.
All right, item three has been moved. Would you pull the board, please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's six yes. Motion carries.
Item four is a hearing, the adoption of the proposed Municipal Housing Agency Annual Budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty of twenty twenty-two. Any discussion or emotion?
Well, I'll move item.
Was it four?
Four has been moved. Would you pull the board, please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's six yes. Motion carries.
Okay, item five is an approval of certification of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development of the amended operating budget for all projects for fiscal year ending June thirty twenty twenty-one and the proposed budget for all projects for fiscal year ending June thirty twenty twenty-two. I do see one hand up, Viola Perry. Viola, you want to make comment? Can you unmute yourself, Viola?
Oh, no, Mayor, no. That wasn't the item I was looking at. Sorry about that.
All right, thank you. Did you want to talk on an earlier item, Viola? All right, I think we're good. Any discussion, council or board? If not, could we have a motion?
I'll move approval of item five.
All right, item five's been moved. Would you please pull the board?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's six yes. Motion carries.
All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda for the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board. Could we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There are none. That concludes the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board meeting. Let's move right into the Devoin City Council meeting. The time is four thirty-eight. Call the meeting to order, and I will ask the clerk to please take role of the Devoin City Council.
County?
Here.
Boson?
Here.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Yeah.
Gatto? Your Honor, that's six present. Motion carries. Or we have a quorum. I'm sorry. We have a quorum.
All right. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. I will make a quick note that item four double A, which is the Garden Night Club, that item has been withdrawn because inspections are incomplete. There's no other changes on the agenda.
If, if not, I'll move the approval of the agenda.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? The agenda is approved. Item three is approving the consent agenda. Tonight, those are items three through fifty. Quickly, item five, I vote no. Item thirty-two, member Gray votes no. Item forty-nine, Gatto and Westergaard both vote no. Are there any other items? There's been none pulled.
And Councilmember Gatto vote no, even though he's not here?
No, because he has not checked in yet. I think we're not gonna allow his vote. So on forty-nine, it's just Westergaard votes no.
Thirty-nine.
It's forty-nine, thank you.
It's forty-nine. It's forty-nine.
All right, let's ask the attendees. Anybody have any items? Seeing none? Ask for a motion to approve. It's been moved. Would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's six yes. Motion carries.
All right. That completes the consent. It takes us to item fifty-one. Item fifty-one is ordinance's first consideration. This is amending chapter one fourteen of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. This is council communication number twenty-one dash one fifteen. A is a code modification related to the Conley Lofts Public Improvement Project on Raccoon Street between Southeast Sixth and Southeast Seventh Streets. And B is a parking restriction revision on Cherry Street between Eighth and Ninth Streets. Council, any, any comments on these?
All right, no, but I'll be happy to move item fifty-one, A and B, and waive the second and third reading.
All right, thank you. Item has been moved. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and pull the council.
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's six yes. Motion carries.
Item fifty-two is amending chapter fifty of the municipal code relating to the floodplain development. Council Communication number twenty-one dash one oh eight. A is the final consideration. The ordinance above, the waiver is requested by our city manager and requires six votes. Any comments regarding chapter fifty, the municipal code relating to floodplain development?
If, if not, I'll move to approve item fifty-two. And, and A also.
Okay. Would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's six yes. Motion carries.
Item fifty-three is amending chapter one fourteen, the municipal code relating to the rates for city parking garages. Council Communication number twenty-one dash one oh three. A under that is a final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is again requested by the city manager and again requires six votes. Any conversation about the rates for the parking garages, council?
If not, I'll move fifty-three and fifty-three A.
All right, fifty-three and fifty-three A have been moved. Would you pull the council, please?
I think there's some, do we have attendees that want to speak? Or we don't speak on this?
They don't speak on this.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because there is people that.
I know. Yeah.
Thank you for watching it. I appreciate it.
No problem.
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum? Your Honor, that's six yes. Motion carries.
All right. This brings us to our communications and reports and essentially our public speaking items. You know, for all those people that are speaking tonight, this evening, under the public speaking, we will be only calling on those who've registered to speak. And because of an increased number of speakers this evening, each is gonna receive one minute and forty-five seconds to make their comments. Please keep your own time because at the end of one minute and forty-five seconds, the clerk's gonna announce time and the speaker's mic's gonna be closed. And we will move immediately to the next speaker. You know, we want to hear from all the citizens and we encourage citizens to be respectful of others' viewpoints that are different from your own. While you may certainly disagree with that viewpoint, I want to remind everyone that council's rules provide that any comments that are slanderous will result in that speaker being barred from further comment. As a presiding officer, I will determine whether comments are slanderous or not. Fair warning, arguing with a presiding officer about the determination is not permitted and doing so will also be considered disruptive and result in speaker being barred from further comments. Let's go ahead and get started. Our first speaker this evening is Adam Kalanen. Adam?
Hello, my name is Adam Kalanen. I use he/him pronouns. I want to start off expressing some confusion over the fact that the city clerk, for some reason, just overruled a council member on whether or not we get public comment on the earlier section. It seems like that decision should be made by the mayor or somebody else, but could just be confused on the rules. Anyway, today is a very stressful day for a lot of us. There is, of course, the trial beginning with Derek Chauvin and also locally Andrea's trial is happening. Just wanted to express that because I don't think that's gonna be mentioned in this meeting, otherwise outside of public comment, but want to talk about a few other things going on as well. First off, with the bad Zoom links that made this meeting start like eighteen minutes early, I'm kind of confused as to how that was just fixed before this because I read to these agendas and I figured that out last Thursday that the Zoom links were messed up. I was hoping that somebody in council would be, you know, actually reading the agendas and noticing that the links were messed up, but apparently they don't. So I wanted to call that out. But more importantly, talking about today's work session earlier, we had our odor control update. As a person that lives downtown, anybody who's been downtown knows the awful smell. I registered, I think, said it best in saying it smells like dog poo. I think it smells a bit worse than that. But apparently the update of the Odor Control Board was that we aren't doing anything with it yet, and we're training people to smell whether or not something smells like dog poo, which I don't think people need to be trained on whether or not dog poo smells bad. So it just, to me, it seems very odd that that is what's happening with that. Also, conflict of interest. I don't really know what to say other than it's very clear that council's looking for specific carve-outs for their situations instead of just taking normal recommendations. The biggest example of that is the four degrees of separation that council installed.
Louise Gomez? Is Louise on? Is this Louise? Is this Louise?
Yes. Yes, this is Louise. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're breaking up a little, Louise.
Okay, is it better now?
Yes, go ahead. You're on.
Okay, so tonight, I didn't really have a lot of, a lot of time to prepare for what I was gonna say today. I was planning on just kind of bringing up the fact that being a constituent in Ward Four, I have no representation in the council. There is literally no one in the council that lives in my ward. And I have yet to, you know, I guess come across a valid reason as to why someone would be allowed to represent a ward when they're not even part of, of the ward. I, I feel like having someone representing Ward Four, who is a business owner in the ward, is sort of a conflict of interest. And so that has been really frustrating and a little bit confusing for me. So I would appreciate, you know, I guess, an explanation or some type of valid reason as to why Mayor County would allow Joe Gatto to represent a ward where he does not reside in. Also, I just wanted to give a shout out. Tomorrow, there's, there's gonna be a memorial for the COVID people who died due to COVID in Iowa, and it's gonna be at one P M. and on the west side of the Capitol Building. So I think that, you know, it is important for us as a community to mourn together and, and take, you know, the steps that we need to, to move forward and to help those that were affected by, by COVID nineteen. Yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, use the rest of my time to express how frustrating it is to have a council where I don't feel represented, where there's no, you know, my, the person is supposed to represent me. It's just interested in.
Holly Herbert? Holly on? Holly, if you're one of the numbers, press star six. All right, I don't see anybody. We'll kind of move on on that one. Let's move to Molly Art. Molly, are you on? Molly? All right, let's try Vanessa. Vanessa, you on?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Vanessa Morincelli. She/her pronouns. So sick and tired of listening to you all, but here we are, and here I go. You spend a lot of time and effort explaining your new rules that you and the rest of the council made up throughout the last year prior to public reporting. So every time we're getting ready to speak, you spout off a list of new rules that you and the council made up with Mr. Lester, or whatever the heck his name is. Um, and it's really triggering, to be honest, and that's why I'm having trouble speaking right now. Um, but anyways, moving on, since I've been attending and speaking at these meetings since last summer, I've been asking you guys the same question over and over in multiple different forms, which is when is it a good time for the public to have discussions with the council? Because you've spent so much time and effort to make up new rules and whatnot to silence the public, but it's your job to listen to us and to represent what we want. So when is it a good time? You guys need to, um, sit, put this on the agenda and explain to us in the community when you want to hear from us. We want to have discussions with you. We want to make Des Moines better. All you guys are doing is sitting in cahoots with your little real estate buddies, making ordinances and codes to get away with all your corruption. You need to be working for us, and that's why we're going to be working really hard in our different wards to replace all of you in the next coming years because we're so tired of it. That's all.
Chelsea Chisholm Vargas?
Hello, council. My name is Chelsea Chisholm Vargas. My pronouns are she/her/aya. I'd like to begin, um, by Mayor County. One thing that I've noticed in, uh, council meetings is you often will refer to folks as, um, citizens in these meetings. Uh, that's a legal term, a legal way to identify someone. So if you could start using terms like, um, residents, uh, that'd be a lot more inclusive and realistic of who's actually speaking at these meetings. Um, I'd like to speak on the, uh, lack of action from the council as well as the Des Moines Police Department regarding the marijuana task force, um, suggestions. I know that, uh, the big pushback from the police department is, well, state law says something else, so we're not going to be in conflict. Um, that really is inaccurate. There are many municipalities across this country who have decriminalized cannabis locally, um, while their states have not. Um, one, for example, is Madison, Wisconsin, where they allow people who are eighteen years or older to possess up to twenty-eight grams of cannabis, which is just under an ounce. Um, as long as they have permission of a property owner, landlord, or tenant, if they're on like public or private property. Um, and if they do have anything above twenty-eight grams, it's just, um, a dollar fine. So there are already cities doing this. I don't know why. Actually, I do know why the Des Moines Police Department is pushing back because that's the way that they target black people, especially in the city of Des Moines, and although they're saying that this is against some legal whatever, uh, we need to be strong and stand in our morals and stand in what we know is right. If we're still, uh, supporting a prohibition against marijuana, then we're harming residents.
Caitlin Hanson?
Hello. Oh, hello. Uh, I use she/her pronouns. I would like to reiterate everything that has been said previously. Um, I mostly am here today to say that we need to seriously rethink and relook at the police department and their budget. Um, my special needs brother recently spent over a month in the Polk County jail, um, where unfortunately, um, now after being out, uh, he not only has to continue to deal with his mental illnesses and being some of intellectual disabilities, but he also has to deal with being a, uh, survivor of sexual assault. And so I would like to just reiterate again that, uh, the Des Moines Police Department does not need any mental health calls on their plate. Uh, we need to reallocate that money so that the city can be safe for those that are most vulnerable and those that are going to have, uh, more likely, um, a negative, um, interactions with the police that are completely unnecessary. Thank you. I will yield to the rest of my time.
Denver Foot?
Hello, um, my name is Denver. I use she/her pronouns, and I wanted to uplift everything that Caitlin just shared. Um, I totally respect her sharing that story, and I definitely relate. We do need to reallocate funds from the Des Moines Police Department into more mental health services for our communities. You, city council, say that people don't understand how things work with council, that we should just join committees or contact the city manager. But are you not our elected officials? What do you do? You uplift and protect racist police officers, while community members have to come together and protect the houseless community from freezing. You continually break open meeting laws to suit yourself. You believe your personal problems, issues, money are more important than children being tear gassed, more important than hundreds of neighbors waiting on housing assistance, more important than food for our communities, more important than a goddamn pipe bomb in a local Incani polling place. People seriously could have died. People are crying out for help. People are crying out for justice. And you are soaked in injustice, injustice for our communities, injustice for Black, Brown, Indigenous, Asian, trans communities, injustice for everyone who fights for equality. You stand in the flame of injustice and pour gasoline on top. You say, "We don't understand." We understand clearly.
Okay, it is five o'clock. Uh, we need to move to the hearings at this time. And, uh, our, um, first hearing item is item fifty-five. Uh, this is to correct the vacation of a portion of Ashworth Park located north of and adjoining five-one-four Foster Drive. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Phil Wagman, our real estate division manager, and requires six votes. Uh, as we move into these, uh, public items, I just quickly want, uh, everybody know that, uh, um, we have one zoning item tonight, that's item fifty-nine. We also have several vacation hearings and some budget hearings and, uh, other, uh, hearing items. As a reminder, for the zoning item only, that's just that item fifty-nine, we will hear from the parties in interest first and then the general public. The parties in interest include only the applicant on item fifty-nine for the rezoning and those persons living within the two hundred and fifty feet of the property to be rezoned to whom the city has sent the notices. After all those parties in interest have commented on that, item fifty-nine, we will open it up to any member of the public for germane comments. To wait the city clerk and calling on the parties in interest, I will ask everyone else to not raise your hands on the Zoom call unless they are the zoning applicant or you live within that two hundred and fifty feet and receive that failed notice. Anyone who raises their hand before it is their time will be uh, compared to the mental list, and if not on the list, will be considered disruptive and will not be recognized for the remainder of the meeting. So please, please, wait until I call on the general public for that item fifty-nine, or you will be not called on to the remainder of the meeting. Because of the more significant response that the planned zoning meeting, uh, for that item fifty-nine, public comments, uh, for, uh, non-parties in interest at one minute per person can proceed until, uh, we determine those comments have become repetitive or disruptive or, uh, will go up to thirty minutes, uh, as passed, uh, whichever happens, uh, sooner. Uh, for the items sixty-one and sixty-two, those persons who have pre-registered an objection will be called on first for their comments as to the nature of their objection. After all those who have pre-registered, uh, have been called on, the general public comment not to exceed, again, one minute per person to a maximum of ten minutes will be called upon uh, for germane comments. Again, those are items sixty-one and sixty-two. For the budget hearing items, those are sixty-five to sixty-seven. I will determine the appropriate length of the hearing as the hearings progress. The hearing will conclude when comments cease or become repetitive and non-german, otherwise, uh, disruptive. So for the remainder of the hearings this evening, any person, uh, may make germane comments, not to exceed that one minute per person to a maximum of five minutes per hearing. As a reminder, all, uh, construction hearings, only comments as to the plans, the specifications, the form of the documents, and the engineer's estimate and low bidder designation are considered germane. Any other comments, uh, considered non-german for the, uh, vacation hearings, only comments related to the proposal, uh, particular, for that particular property are going to be considered germane. So, uh, let's go ahead and get started. Again, item fifty-five on that, uh, vacation of a portion of uh, Ashworth Park, uh, located north of and adjoining five-fourteen Foster Drive. Counsel, any comments on this one?
No comments. I'll, I'll move, move it after we have an opportunity for public comment.
Yep, let's go ahead. Uh, we'll, um, open it up, see if there's anybody in the public, um, on this item who would like to make a comment. Seeing none?
I'll move item fifty-five, A and B.
Let's pull the council please. Okay, could you pull the council please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Okay, item fifty-six is to correct the vacation of a portion of Court Avenue right of way located south of and adjoining three-nineteen Court Avenue. A is the first consideration of this ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested again by Phil Wagman, our real estate division manager, and requires six votes. Any comment from the council? On item fifty-six? If not, let's open it up, see if there's any of our attendees have any comments to make about the vacation of a portion, portion of Court Avenue right of way located south of three-nineteen.
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item fifty-six, A and fifty-six B.
You're right, item fifty-six, A and B has been moved. Would you pull the council please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item fifty-seven is on request from Mundo Popento LLC to vacate a segment of Southwest First Street right of way between Columbus Avenue and Indianola Road to convey to Mundo Popento, uh, LLC for four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Again, item fifty-seven, any comments, council? Hearing none. Let's see if there's any comments from the, uh, the public. Item fifty-seven.
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move fifty-seven, uh, and fifty-seven A, and I'll move to waive the second and third reading.
All right. Would you pull the council please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item fifty-eight is on the city-initiated request for a vacation of a segment of East Thirty-Eighth Street right of way between Hubble Avenue and East Douglas Avenue and the conveyance to Get 'n Go Convenience Stores, Inc. for sixty-nine thousand four hundred and forty dollars. Council Communication number twenty-one dash one oh two. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Any comments, council? Seeing none, let's see if there's any attendees would like to make any comment again on that, uh, city-initiated request for vacation of the section of East Thirty-Eighth. Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Yes, sir. I will move item fifty-eight and fifty-eight A and request that the second and third reading be waived.
All right, would you pull the council please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, item fifty-nine, this is, uh, our item on a request from Wesley Retirement Services, Inc. for approval of an amendment to the Wesley Acres P U D conceptual plan on property located at thirty-five-twenty Grand Avenue and four-oh-one Thirty-seventh Street, and this item was continued from February twenty-second. Um, again, I'll ask that, that there's any parties in interest, either the applicant or those within two hundred and feet, I guess we'll ask the applicant first if they, uh, have a representative who would like to speak. Uh, it looks like Rob? Would you like to speak first?
I have Darren, Your Honor.
All right, sorry, Kay. Could Rob speak first?
Sure.
Thank you. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you, Mayor County, council members, uh, for the opportunity to share our story and rationale for our request for the amendment to our current P U D at thirty-five-twenty Grand Avenue in Des Moines, which is known as Wesley Acres. Uh, my name's Rob Kretzinger. Uh, I'm the CEO of Wesley Life, the owner and operator Wesley Acres. Uh, I've been part of Wesley for twenty-five years, served as a CEO for the last eighteen years. Um, just, uh, to note, all of our work is organized through our nonprofit, uh, designations. In total, we impact approximately nine thousand people annually, uh, with the majority of those folks located in the greater Des Moines area. We're governed by a volunteer board of directors. All of them live in the Des Moines area with the exception of one. And our why, in terms of our purpose, is to create an environment and experience where people live longer and healthier lives, lives of engagement and relevance. And we do this despite their age, health, uh, where they live, or their income. And I believe we're the only full continuum of service in the Des Moines area. As many of you likely know, Wesley Acres sits on a very historic location. That's a hundred and eighteen years old. We're the second owner. At the center of Wesley Acres is the Chamberlain Mansion. It's on the National Historic Registry. And for us, it has significance, importance. It's where our organization began and started in July seventh in nineteen forty-seven, when the first people took residence at Wesley Acres became a reality. While we've grown across the state over the last seventy-four years, the city of Des Moines has been our place of origin, and in many respects, Wesley Acres is our mothership. It means much to us both from a historic perspective, but also from an impact perspective. We have a love and commitment to this location, to the city. Our amendment represents a twenty million dollar investment in Des Moines and our campus, and without adding any additional revenue-producing space. Important to remember that because I think you may hear that we're doing this for that we're doing this from a motivation of profit. Our driver is to help Wesley Acres remain relevant to the people they serve. And it's also worth noting, because this has come up as well, that we do in fact pay property taxes. We have for nearly three decades, it's approximately three hundred thousand dollars annually. I think that too has been brought into focus. Also want to stress that we employ two hundred and twenty-five plus team members, with the vast majority of those living in the city of Des Moines and have been with us for decades. The PUD amendment is, is because we want to build on the past, which has been successful, but also reinvent for the future. And this has not been a significant, there has not been a significant renovation or addition at Wesley Acres in thirty years. And we'd have to go back to the Stoddard Health Center that was built in ninety-one, nineteen ninety-two. Key lifestyle and wellness amenities that are commonplace in senior living communities just don't exist at Wesley Acres or at the size and design that they need to be to remain relevant. In some regard, our campus was built and designed to serve the GI generation or the silent generation, yet we all know that the baby boomers are seeking something different, they're now into their mid-seventies. Wesley Acres has fallen behind. So further, over the last ten to fifteen years, Wesley Acres has evolved to be a community resource. I served on the Grand Restoration Board several years ago, and through that process discovered that Grand Avenue has more condos and apartment living per capita than any other area in the city. Thirty-three-sixty Grand, thirty-six-sixty-three, the Barbicon, Forty-oh-four Summit, many others have active adults that reside there, yet wish to remain independent and age well at their condo. Our mission reaches out to them through our Well Ahead membership that has existed for many years, where health and wellness services are made available. In addition, one of our most important strategic themes at Wesley Life is to eliminate ageism. To do that well, we must work to create a setting that brings generations together around common purposes. Segregation of generations is sad and something we want to change. Elements of both our design and program will do that more intentionally. We've sent, we've submitted a lot of materials in advance this hearing, have had many meetings with stakeholders, including representatives of the Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association Board. We feel we've collaborated on every issue and have similar goals. We haven't come to an agreement, though, with everyone. Darren Schlappco, our VP of Development and Construction, will go through the design and site plan, provide details, council will want to see and understand and make the most informed decision. The quick highlight of the efforts Wesley Acres has made, we've agreement that we will not develop to the south of our property into the woods, something we've never planned to do, something that's been in, in memory or has been talked about, but we've memorialized that through this process. Agreement not to add any additional parking at our parking lot adjacent to the Bolton. Concerning was voiced that it may lead to an entrance or exit off of Thirty-seventh Street, and great concern around that, so we've taken that off the request as well. From the very beginning, stormwater retention, water quality mitigation was important to us, so we've addressed that as well. And we have issues with the, the height of the building on the west side has been lowered to its lowest point of thirty-two feet, which equates to twenty-eight feet due to elevation differences. So I think I'm at time, I will have Darren go into a little bit more detail on the design work.
All right, Darren, you're up.
Am I unmuted? Great, thank you. Honorable mayor, members of council, I'd just like to start by addressing one quick thing before I get into the details, but today, or actually on March fourth, JHNA issued a letter that supports everything in our PUD amendment except for any of the new amenities on the west side of our campus. It's worth noting that what we're proposing on the west side of our building is a vital piece needed to continue to serve our current residents, future residents, et cetera, as Rob just very clearly identified and, and explained. Our master planning process for this campus has always been deeply rooted in our mission and our heritage, but this specific process took a very hard and long look at how we would serve the community outside of our walls as well, which includes the Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association. In that letter, Nick Larson, their president, talks about protecting the residents, protecting the value of the residents' homes, and preserving the historical integrity of the neighborhood. And I think it's abundantly clear that this project is of no harm to any of the residents or their families based on, on how it's been designed and how we've operated over the years. I would also argue that nothing associated with this project will disrupt the value of any of the neighboring homes. In fact, nothing creates greater value for homes in that area than of strong and vibrant Wesley Acres campus. And then this project, as proposed, is working towards protecting the historical integrity of this neighborhood by a full restoration of the Chamberlain home. The design of all the new features inside and out fall in line with the design intent of the Chamberlain House as well, so that it fits in nicely and cleanly with the neighborhood. And it'll, it'll enhance the historical nature of the neighborhood by featuring this style throughout the campus. That was all of our intentions as we got into this process. With that said, you know, we've worked hard to find solutions, as Rob has said. Kay, on slide number thirteen, if you don't mind scrolling through a few of those, if you're able, I don't know if you are or not. We identified all the different items that we were, that were brought to us by the Neighborhood Association that we have addressed. First of all, along those lines was the lack of communication with the Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association. We have been in constant communication with them as early as August, but more thoroughly from early November all the way through last Friday, trying to find common ground on a number of issues, which we did. Stormwater, water quality, professionally-designed systems by Bishop Engineering to ensure that we're taking full advantage of being able to satisfy any water runoff issues there might be with the neighbors. We've actually reduced that outflow by over fifty percent. Construction of the South Woods, which we have agreed not to do with the Neighborhood Association. Additional parking's been removed, as Rob said. I think the biggest item that has still remains is the height of the aquatics building in the landscape buffer with the two adjacent neighbors, Scott Carlson, Kevin McPhee. What we have done since our original design is we have taken a thirty-five-foot building, which might be referred to as forty feet by some, but it has never been to that height. Thirty-five feet is our initial design, we have reduced that to thirty-two feet, full elevation. With the change in elevation from the residential neighbors to our site, there is approximately a four-foot reduction generally from Mr. McPhee's property to our property. It's actually greater from Mr. Carlson's property, there's about an eight-foot-tall concrete fence, then there's obviously a privacy fence there too. But the actual height from, from the neighbor's perspective reduces it by about four feet to twenty-eight feet instead of thirty-two. We have gone through and designed this addition with a two percent reflective glass to be conscious of, of the amount of sun reflectivity that might come out off of this. We have designed professionally a landscaping buffer with Bishop Engineering that both Mr. Carlson and Mr. McPhee have been a part of, and we've done that collaboratively with them, showing all of our intentions totally transparent. Offered to plant additional trees in their own yards to assist with
Time.
aspect of the viewpoint from the neighbors. So I appreciate the time, thank you.
All right. Let's go ahead and open it up. It looks like the first person that wants to speak is Chelsea, go ahead.
Hi, yes, Chelsea Chisomargas. Excuse me, thank you, my pronouns are she, her, a, yeah, and I would like to say that I am confused. Excuse me? Can I speak or?
Okay, I didn't see any other people of interest with their hands up, but let me ask that Chelsea, we're going to see if there's, if everybody put their hand down just for a second here. Are there any other parties in interest that need to speak? Parties in interest? I see Scott Carlson, I know that he is a party in interest. Scott?
Good evening, mayor and the rest of the city council. My name is Scott Carlson, I'm three-one-five Thirty-seventh Street, and I'm opposed any construction to the west. First off, I think Wesley's a gem for the neighborhood, my mother was a longtime resident there. She was well taken care of, enjoyed her time, she passed away a year ago, May. But don't be fooled, she paid full price to come into Wesley Acres. It was a six-figure initiation deposit that she had to put down on her one-bedroom, forty-four-hundred-dollar-a-month independent living apartment. And when her final day, she spent eighty-nine-hundred dollars a month for full-on nursing. This is not a not-for-profit, it's not a charity, it's not St. Jude's or the Shriners Hospital, it's the most expensive retirement center within the Des Moines city limits. Part of my story is about broken promises, which you may have read in your notes, Wesley is visibly obtrusive. There is a noise and light pollution problem, there's general disregard for the neighbors, one of them is me. Can you, can you bring up page one oh three on the packet, please?
She'll try, but right now, I'm not sure that, it's such a large packet, I'm not sure we'll be able to.
Yeah, just one oh three, so that's why I did the page number, but since basically it shows that, that, you know, there's no buffer between me and the, and Wesley Acres for quite some time. Since we moved into our home, two sets of buffering has been removed, at least thirteen trees taken down. Seven more coming down to build their aquatic center, three pools in total, a yoga area and a workout facility, and a hundred and fifty-seat auditorium. Let's be clear, I'm not part of the problem, I'm not part of the small angry mob that maybe Rob thinks I am. I have, I have taken out my pool at substantial cost and started to put in my own buffering since I got no response from Wesley. Even, even just two weeks ago on Saturday, I received a private email from Darren Schlapfle, the vice president of Development Construction for Wesley, on February twenty-seventh, and stating, I quote, "Of course," period, "I committed to you that I would get this done." "But that being said, the agreement will not go into effect unless the PUD is approved by the city council," period. "If the PUD and site plan approvals don't pass, none of this landscape will be put in." I just want, I, period, just to be clear. Yet, another promise already broken. And I think it should be noted that I've already gotten a lowered tax rate for my home, just from the same pictures that you may see if they come up from the, from the packet above. What's happening to me and my neighborhood are not any different than those of past people dealing with large corporations or entities. It's not like Wesley set out to be troublesome or unfriendly. It's just the nature of a large institution's inability to relate to the smaller neighbors. Compassion or empathy are easily lost as a business grows in size, especially the size of Wesley. And that could be heard loud and clear from the email communication between the PMZ Madam Chairperson Jan Fried and Rob Kretzinger, the CEO of Wesley. Jan Fried asked a simple one-sentence question to Rob, and I quote, "Rob," comma, "the architect said Wesley pays taxes, please clarify." "Most people think Wesley as, are, as a NFP and does not pay taxes," period. "Please let me know," period, "thanks," period. Rob's response to the question with four paragraphs that included plenty of color, but had very little to do with her question. Part of it reads, quote, "When I heard Scott Carlson ask the council to please save his home," in my quotes, "I about threw up," dot, dot, dot. "I want to say, please, save our home," I think he's talking about Wesley now. "We are the second owner in a hundred and eighteen years." This kind of language just drives home the fact that we are a tiny insignificant sliver in their empire of eleven properties. This one alone is now valued at forty-eight million, and only will get higher when they add the new property. And proves that there has not been much good faith from Wesley trying to find a solution. Can you bring up page thirty? As you can see, Wesley, this is what Wesley has done in their hundred and eighteen years. I would challenge any of you to identify the original home on this topographical map. And today, this kind of intensity wouldn't be approved. Wesley talks about, say, staying current and needing to add to, to these neighborhood-herding amenities to stay competitive. But I think they're forgetting that the neighborhood quite possibly could be their biggest amenity. Why would Wesley want to hurt that? Wesley said they draw most of their people within one mile. They discussed that the residents want this aquatic center and are in favor of the addition, of course they want the aquatic center. I wouldn't, I would love these amenities if I was living there as well. But I don't think they have been asked, would you want these amenities while hurting the property value of your direct neighbors? And maybe lowering property value within the neighborhood. Wesley's, Wesley's property is already overbuilt, and the traffic intensity is stressed beyond their current footprint. As was proven ten years ago when they came to me and desperately needed just ten spots to park. However, all of these additions that are new
All right, it looks like is, is Mr. McAfee on? Again, only those parties in, in interest. Kevin McAfee is a party in interest. Is there, as I can tell, Kevin, you are close to this.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Kevin McAfee, I live at three-twenty-one Thirty-seventh Street, and I'll try to be brief. I certainly appreciate all the dialogue we've had with Wesley Acres and the, the commentary that we've heard. But as the most directly impacted neighbor, I continue to be opposed to this portion of the development. And, you know, it bears some background on why we moved here. We moved here three years ago and chose this neighborhood and this lot because it's large, it has privacy, and certainly we knew that we were next to a neighbor that is a retirement home, but certainly did not anticipate the size and scale of this build. So two, two primary reasons why we're opposed to this, and the first is the tangible. What is being proposed is not only high, whether it's thirty-two, or if you take in the reduction of twenty-eight feet, it's big. It's about the size of a full house, and it's in between my house and their current build, which is currently green space, there's a tree, there's some sky that you'll see, and so it's not only the height, but the depth. And so on page twenty-three of the packet, it really shows the total impact. There are some other renderings that are purported to be kind of the view from ours, and I really want to believe that, but as I walk out in the backyard, I just can't fathom how we're not going to see it. You can see how big it is, and right now, there is nothing there. So that has a direct impact, it will impact our privacy, and I think it could and will impact our property value. And I think the second point is really more of an intangible. You know, some of the discussion throughout, not tonight, is that neighbors are flip-flopping or not being clear. And it's really quite the opposite. We have agonized over the possible compromise because we do value Wesley Acres as a neighborhood feature, and it's important, but we do not want to be the holdup. But at the end of the day, we're being forced to see whether or not we'll live with this, and the compromise basically is, are you okay with this building, or are you okay with this building? I do acknowledge that the landscaping plan is a good faith effort, and I really wanted to believe that that would create a sufficient buffer, but I don't think it will be sufficient. As has already been mentioned, there's already a large footprint that Wesley Acres has, and I have to believe there's another way to get these amenities on their property. It might not be as convenient or something that can be done on their timing, but I don't see why I have to be the one that sacrifices. Hopefully, both our house and Wesley Acres are here for another hundred years, so let's not rush it. Clearly, I have a bias, but I truly have tried to stay objective and reflect on additional information. I think at the end of the day, the compromise that we're being asked to make is not really a compromise, it's being asked to just accept this new build. This house is our largest asset, and I believe that it's important for us to protect it. So at the end of the day, we're at an impasse with Wesley Acres, and I hope that you will see our perspective and reject this western portion of their project. Thank you.
All right, Kay, are there any other parties in interest? That made your list?
Yes.
Okay, who would that be?
Nicholas Larson. Nicholas Larson.
Okay, Nick, you're up. Nick Larson?
Yeah, yeah, do you guys have me now?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, all right, copy that. Uh, good evening, uh, Honorable Ma- Mayor and Des Moines City Council. Uh, do, do I have the, the five minutes, uh, time, sir?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you very much. Um, well, I'm just gonna go ahead and, and just, uh, open up. Um, you know, I heard Rob and, uh, Darren speak and, you know, uh, I'm, we disagree with their assessment and what the true impact will be for our neighbors in Greenwood Historic. Remember that if this is approved, this building will be permanent, uh, fixture to our neighborhood. And as far as the communications, uh, between us and Wesley, we're gonna go ahead and disagree with their assessment on how that has gone as well. But, uh, you know, the association, right? We welcome development plans on the northern-east side of their campus. But we, we've gotta be flatly opposed to any development on the west side. Expansion to the west is gonna degrade home values and, uh, ruin historic nature of our neighborhood. Um, GHNA, you know, um, we appeal to you, the city, to consider the integrity of neighborhoods and the needs, uh, you know, to hold us above the needs of large corporations. Our association's primary mission is to protect the safety of its residents, values, uh, of homes for its residents, and preserve our historical integrity. Uh, additional, uh, building, brick and mortar behind Thirty-Seventh is gonna threaten those, those core values. So we recognize that Wesley's, uh, customers are foreign, former GHNA residents who chose to stay in the neighborhood because of the current GHNA members of Wesley's future customers. Our stance, which is to preserve the integrity of the neighborhood, is not done out of desire to say no to every post-project. On the contrary, we're taking steps to ensure preservation of our neighborhood for current and future residents. Additionally, uh, something that should be understood and certainly cannot be denied is the continuous creep on our neighborhood. Uh, you know, one of the founding reasons for the GHNA, uh, was to prevent these large institutions that border our neighborhood from encroaching on our residential area, potentially degrading, uh, the safety of our residents and failing to maintain detention ponds. Uh, and, uh, you know, it, degrading property values and historical integrity of our neighborhood. Um, you know, it, it's kind of likewise the way, you know, part of the reason the PMZ exists was to protect Des Moines residents. Um, you know, some PMZ members heard our concerns during the January, uh, twenty, uh, meeting specifically commented, you know, "Skull creep is real" on our neighborhood and voted to deny Wesley Acres' request before you today. Uh, although that vote went in Wesley's favor, it was far from unanimous as it went, uh, eight-four-one, uh, in Wesley's favor with the Madam Chair abstaining as she is a Greenwood Historic, uh, neighborhood resident. So, you know, as I've looked back through the historical documents maintained by our organization, it became apparent, uh, apparent that the continual expansion into our neighborhood is not new and it's not going away. Um, you know, as you know, uh, Des Moines University completely destroyed Lincoln Court, which used to be a residential street in our neighborhood, to build what is now Ryan Hall. Uh, you know, and, you know, reading minutes from a November thirtieth, two thousand and one meeting, you know, the most robust discussion centered on Wesley Acres' continuous expansion into our neighborhood. And, uh, you know, the need, uh, for us to prevent further encro- encroachment, or at least ensure that they follow through on promises that they made to keep on the nineteen-ninety-two PUD change. So although you may feel this project is small and has minimal impact, please consider the strategic vision, what the big picture has been over the years. We can only hypothesize, you know, uh, as to why DMU, uh, was buying homes on Thirty-first Street, and as to why Wesley Acres must have this one addition, you know, to the west of its campus to stay competitive. Um, you know, addition in the crotches, you know, uh, on our neighborhood, uh, you, you know, and the attempt to get additional parking to the west that would all but create another entrance exit Thirty-Seventh Street. And I understand that's off the table, so thank you very much, uh, Des Moines City staff. Um, you know, historically, one thing that's been documented over the years is the negative impacts in our neighborhood resulting from the expansion of the large institutions in our north side. You know, we just, Wesley's current proposed project to the west had negative impacts to the neighborhood due to the design and its height and depth. They are going from one pool to four pools and increasing an assembly area from fifty to a hundred-and-fifty seats. And this is all coming with the intent to add more housing and an already overly intense use of land. So I ask, how much further into our neighborhood will these institutions create? How many more homes will have to be adversely, uh, you know, affected or destroyed? How many more times do we need to resist encroachment by a powerful entity? I ask you, Des Moines City Council and Honorable Ma- Mayor, when is enough gonna be just that enough? Thank you.
Kay, other parties in interest?
Your Honor, the names that show are not names that I have on my list, so I can't definitively answer that. If any of the other names are, they do not show on my list.
Oh, boy.
Except for Scott, Scott Carlson.
Well, and he's spoken already.
He spoke, yes.
I, I can say, I think most of the other names are neighbors. Uh, I don't, I'm not familiar with Sarah Federson, who could, uh, live in either the Bolton or the Wesley Tower, which I think would put, if you're in either of those buildings, would put you within the two-hundred-and-fifty feet.
And I know Gloria Gray lives at, uh, Wesley.
All right, well, let's, let's open it up then. Let's start with Gloria.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Gloria, we can.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, County, and Council members. My name is Gloria Gray, and I do not live at Wesley. I live in a condo at three-six-six-seven Grand Avenue, which is just right down the street from Wesley. I'm a retired person. I had been driving to West Des Moines for an, for an exercise class until a neighbor told me about the Wesley program. I made an appointment. I went to see it, and I was very impressed, and I can walk there, which is, which is very good. And I'm here to speak in favor of Wesley's updated PUD dated March first. There is a need for Wesley to upgrade their landlocked Grand Avenue facilities to enhance the care and support of residents now and will into the future. Wesley serves about three-hundred residents at any one time right now, and hel- helps not only their residents but older community members who want to be active and healthy. I was attending Wesley's fitness center exercise classes as a community member for about two and a half years until COVID hit and got to know the place pretty well, both residents and staff. Classes have been great, but we have been crowded in class many times. There simply is just not enough space. The proposed wellness space will allow more seniors to take advantage of this wonderful resource. Logic tells us that the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few. I have seen the neighborhood concerns in the February eight PUD and also read many comments from other neighbors who are solidly in favor of the enhancements, as I am. Wesley's March one response to City Council members shows that Wesley has addressed neighbor concerns while still true to the plans to make much-needed enhancements to benefit residents and community members. For seventy-four years, Wesley has been a great asset to the, to the Des Moines community and for seniors of this community. Please help them continue this tradition on Grand Avenue. Thank you very much.
All right, let's, uh, go ahead and, and, uh, open this up. Uh, we're just gonna take these as, uh, general public uh, comments. Let's start with, uh, Christine. Uh, if you'll give it, and these, these comments will be, uh, uh, one minute. Uh, so keep your, your, your time and keep your, um, be very succinct in your comments. So Christine, appreciate your input.
Okay, thank you. Um, I am a neighbor who actually lives several blocks to the south. I cannot see Wesley Acres from my house, but I do fear that any further encroachment will be detrimental to our neighborhood. Um, Thirty-Seventh Street is the iconic and historic entrance to our neighborhood. And as others have spoken, this pool complex will be visible between two beautifully maintained historic homes that were each built in nineteen-ten. There are other historic homes on that street and throughout the neighborhood. However, the neighborhood is not just, you know, big fancy houses. There's quite a variety of housing here. Um, I, I want to make sure that everybody understands how valuable a unique neighborhood like this is to the city. We've seen too many of our neighborhoods decay, and I, I want to see this one, um, live on as nice as it is now. Um, there's a reason why people want to buy houses here. There's trees. There's rolling hills. It's unique. Um, the Des Moines Marathon goes down Thirty-Seventh Street. There's a reason for that. Thank you for listening.
All right, let's go on to Alun Stiger. Lon, can you unmute yourself?
Sorry, uh, yeah, this is Lon Stiger. I, I just want to talk about how these projects come about within the neighborhood with the institutions to our north. Um, looking at, uh, Des Moines University and Wesley, it seems like there's a lot of planning that goes on by the institutions. They spend a lot of money with their design to kind of get their heart set on doing something. And they have meetings with, you know, people from city planning, city council, whomever. And then when all that's done, it gets presented to the neighborhood. And the neighborhood's sort of left on its own to kind of defend itself against, you know, city planning, PMZ, city council, the institution. When I think it'd be much better, just a, a future procedure, if we could get engaged sooner and, and, and maybe have some of these things out before the design is drawn up. Because in the end, we always get painted as the obstructionists and as being sort of, you know, against the institutions, which we're really not. We just want to be fairly engaged in the process from the beginning or early on. And it just has not been that case time after time, and I think that's contributed to this.
Mark? Quiner?
Hi, this is Mark Quiner. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Mark Quiner. I live at one-nineteen Thirty-Fourth Street. Um, I'd like to state for the relationship, uh, that I, for the record, I have no financial relationship with Wesley Acres or no financial interest, in, interest in the matter before you. I'm speaking as a ma- member of the Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association. My principal concern is the damage that development on the west side of Wesley Acres Campus will do to property values and the historic nature of our neighborhood. We have other neighbors here tonight speaking to other facets of this. I would like, like to speak to a financial conflict of interest between PMZ Commissioner Greg Wadié, Wesley Acres, and its CEO, Rob Kretzinger. Early in this process, the neighborhood requested that Mr. Wadié, an architect with Slingshot Architecture, come and look at Wesley's project with the neighbors. The idea was that a PMZ member that is also an architect would be well-qualified to discuss the tension between commercial development and historic preservation. The answer from Wadié, no, on advice of the city legal department. Through a FOIA request, I found nineteen pages of emails leading up to the PMZ hearing on this matter between Wadié and Wesley CEO, Rob Kretzinger.
Hi.
Later, later I discovered.
It looks like Eric. Burgland.
Thank you. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, my name is Eric Burgland. I live at three-three-one-four John Lind Road. Uh, I'm opposed to the PUD expansion on the western side. I think that it's clear the expansion is explicitly aimed at growing the number of residents and intensity on this property, both from residents and non-residents. The cost of this transaction you're being asked to engage in, the payment for this comes largely at the expense of Mr. Carlson and Mr. McPhee. But the neighborhood and the city also lose from further degradation of this historic neighborhood, as has been mentioned. The aim here is to make it more intense. So what's the next ask? If the council doesn't protect the neighborhood this time, are you all trusting that someone will be there to protect their neighborhood next time? It's impossible to keep these additive requests in concept.
All right, Chelsea? Vanessa?
Uh, this is Vanessa, not Chelsea. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, uh, why are we skipping over Chelsea? I, she got interrupted by Josh very rudely, and, um, we never went back to her. But anyways, I needed to send for the record that the CEO, Rob, of Wesley Retirement Services, was allowed to speak um, for several seconds after Kay called time, which is really weird because she's like on that mute button when the rest of us are speaking. So it doesn't make any sense. Um, and I also wanted to point out that Josh Mandelbaum, can you hear me still? Hello?
Vanessa, do you have any comment to make, uh, regarding this?
Oh, yeah, uh, yes, I do. Thank you for calling attention to that. Um, I just wanted to point out that Josh Mandelbaum like interrupted Chelsea on National Women's Day or International Women's Day. Um, and then we never went back to her.
Disruptive. Thank you, Vanessa. Let's move to Chelsea right now.
Thank you. This is Chelsea Chisholm-Vargas. My pronouns are she/her/they. I appreciate being able to speak, um, after I was already interrupted on International Women's Day. Um, I would like to say about all of this, it's just baffling to see all of these rich people fighting over this issue. Um, yeah, I really don't want this Wesley place to expand for a lot of reasons, none of which, um, are in support of any of the reasons that those other rich people felt. But, um, yeah, I also did want to add that I believe their name was Rob when you were speaking, and then you were told time. Just continued to speak and was not muted. It's very obvious that the council operates on a bias and allows business owners, wealthy elites, to speak after the timeframe while the rest of us get cut off mid-sentence. I think that's really important to recognize because it really shows how the council's valuing people's opinions, how the council's not valuing other people's opinions. And how Councilmember Josh Mandelbaum can interrupt anyone when they're speaking, um, which is totally rude, especially when you're trying to kick off your campaign.
Hi.
Peyton?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, yeah, I just wanted to kind of echo what Chelsea was saying. Um, basically, I, um, I'm not really, I don't really care honestly how this goes, because, you know, either way, you guys are just gonna be like voting for rich people. Um, it's either like, you know, the development, whatever, gets to expand and take all these people's houses out, which you guys would love because, you know, the corporations get whatever they want. Or, you know, the rich people who live in the neighborhood, you're supporting them. And, you know, whenever it comes the other way, when it's like, uh, spanning development into poorer neighborhoods, we already know how you guys are gonna vote, so it's very.
You have something germane to this issue to, uh, comment on?
I'm pretty sure this is germane. I'm saying, uh, I'm talking about the thing that's happening, am I not?
Uh, I think you're arguing, uh, Peyton. I think it's disruptive.
Excuse, what? I'm talk.
Adam?
Um, yeah, I have a lot of thoughts. I'll start off with, um, if it's as contentious of an issue as it obviously has been since the packet's over a hundred pages long, um, since there's been back and forth, and since the original delay was moved from last meeting to this meeting, um, it really just seems like council, it should be a good, a good time for council to just like kind of, um, take it off the agenda and work on it until it gets to a place that's acceptable. This should just be rejected outright. Um, also want to point out that it's unfortunate that, um, appears that City Council is working directly with the CEO and the corporation instead of the people. We haven't really heard from the people who live in this retirement home or the employees, especially during COVID. I would like to hear from, hear from those people or at least make sure they're being considered, which doesn't seem like they are. Um, also just want to point out, um, I don't think throughout any of this, we've, um, any of these meetings, we've seen Josh react to racist comments being made loudly, the way that Josh reacted to the rich stakeholders here being skipped over, and that really concerns me. I kind of thought Josh just didn't want to cut people off, but now I know that it's just certain situations.
Hi.
Brad? Weizenmeyer?
This is Brad Weizenmeyer. I use he/him pronouns. I live on the East Village. Uh, happy International Women's Day to, um, all women and femme people listening today. Um, Josh Mandelbaum, you owe Chelsea an apology. Frank County, you owe.
You have some, uh, comments to make germane.
Yeah, so I really appreciated a lot of the perspective that Peyton was offering. Um, that just happened to not, um, maybe agree with your perspective, and then you, uh, accused her of arguing, uh, on International Women's Day. That's pretty disgusting.
Would you please, uh, stick to the, uh, uh, germane comments of the issue?
Yes, uh, you are a misogynist piece of shit, Frank County.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Jalen.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. I am going to attempt to speak slowly, um, just so that you, Mayor Frank County can hopefully find me to be articulate. Um, that is a goal of mine. So please, I hope that you think I'm articulate after I give this statement. But just wanted to speak on this particular agenda item. Uh, and you know, this has really been a very long, long discussion that we've had on this agenda item. And like folks have pointed out in the past, it is, um, rich people fighting against other rich people, right? Um, and this is really seemed to be the highest priority that we've seen council really take up and, and, and spend a lot of time on. Um, so I'm just curious, um, why is that? I understand that this is a controversial topic, but. Once again, we're seeing council prioritize, um, rich, wealthy, white property owners. Um, rather than actually addressing the real problems that we have in the city, um, or really doing anything to help folks out. Um, so I don't think that this should be expanded. I think that, um, everyone who lives in this neighborhood and.
Indira.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I am speaking, um, I'm speaking kind of mutually on this item, but basically in opposition. Um, because I think what's really important is that you listen to the residents, um, that are in the area. But I also do want to acknowledge the fact that, um. The way that we talk about these things, we consider parties of interest in the two hundred and fifty feet. We consider the neighborhood association. But we don't consider the fact that these things affect the rest of the entire city. The neighborhood, like the property values in this neighborhood do affect the rest of the entire city. And so limiting the time that we have to speak on these issues from different parts of the city. Isn't really addressing the, the problem, but I do want to like acknowledge the fact that people in the neighborhood who live in this area are clearly in opposition to this plan. And y'all could reach a consensus. Um, it's clear they want to work together. So y'all could be reaching a consensus on what happens in this neighborhood if you want to isolate it that way. Um, but that's not what's happening. I am expecting council to vote yes on this because you put it on the agenda and that's usually what you have.
Denver.
Hello, um, Denver foot, she/her pronouns. I just wanted to uplift everything that everyone has said. Happy International Women's Day. Um, and I think like, we've been talking about this for so many times. Um, it basically either helps, uh, rich homeowners or it helps a large corporation that has horrible reviews. Um, you know, people being not taken, being taken care of, workers not being taken care of. Um, so I think we should really just reject this, as Adam has said. Um, I think we should do more research, uh, figure out what best helps our community and our neighbors. Um, and how we can do that. Um, so, yep, and that's all.
Sarah Feddersen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, you're breaking up a little bit, Sarah, but we can hear you.
Okay, I live at three thirty-five, thirty-first street and I support Wesley Acres and their desire to beautify their property. It's going to, to our property value. And I, I just want to point out some of the neighborhoods that have been slow to adopt and, and modernize. If we look at Riverbend, if we look at Highland Park, we don't want that to happen to our, of the seniors in our neighborhood. And I want to give them the best amenities that we can. And I want to let Wesley know that they're a valued neighbor in the Greenwood Historic District. Thank you.
Jeriann Maines.
Yes, this is Jeriann Maines. I go by Jerry. Um, and I just wanted to say that the council should reject this, um, proposal. And I also wanted to propose that the city council, um, hire and pay for, or not hire, but pay for an attorney for the Des Moines People's Town Hall. Um, to attend these council meetings with us so that we have the opportunity to hold the council, specifically the mayor. Accountable for breaking their own rules that you go over, over and over again during every single meeting. So if you could please start the discussion on, um, paying for an attorney for the Des Moines People's Town Hall.
Wesley retirement proposal, please. Let's move to Lennon Cardwell.
Hello, um, I think that city council should reject this proposal. And I also think that Frank County should not be calling black women argumentative when they're making a valid point. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Uh, Margaret Stewart. Margaret, can you unmute yourself?
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Uh, this is Margaret Stewart. I live in the Greenwood Historic Neighborhood and I hope that you will, um, support Wesley's proposal. I think it is a, um, fantastic, um, opportunity for your older constituents, um, in, in this neighborhood, uh, and who reside at Wesley. I wrote you a letter. I won't repeat myself. Um, but I'm just asking please to, uh, support their proposal. Thank you.
All right, I think, uh, we're done, council. Let's move, uh, to, uh, our discussion. Josh, go ahead.
First of all, uh, and I'll start, I, I will apologize to, to Chelsea. Uh, I, I was trying to clarify, uh, in this case to, to follow the rules and adapt the parties and interests. And I didn't want to see you get disqualified, Chelsea, but I, I could have, I should have just waited. So I apologize. Um, but I, I wanted to address this issue. Um, and first off, start by saying that I appreciate all of the, the feedback, uh, on this project. Uh, I've been tracking this since it first appeared, uh, on the Planning and Zoning Commission Agenda. That was the first time that I had actually heard about it myself, was when I saw it noticed on Planning and Zoning. And my first conversations about the project were actually at, I think it was the November Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association meeting. Uh, and then I heard for the first time from Wesley shortly after that. Since then, I've talked with neighbors, including, uh, folks from the Neighborhood Association. Uh, Kevin and Scott multiple times each. Uh, I've heard from multiple people who live on the Wesley campus, uh, and others who live nearby the campus. Uh, so it's been a broad mix of folks, uh, who I've heard from. Some of those folks were on the, the meeting tonight. Some have submitted formal comments into the record. Uh, there've been a lot of folks on all sides of this issue. Uh, and it's important to note that, that this conversation involves many different neighbors and residents. I think some of the, the speakers talked about that. Uh, you know, there are over three hundred people who live on the Wesley campus itself. There are, I believe, just over a hundred sixty households in the Greenwood Historic Neighborhood Association. And then there are folks, uh, like, like we heard from Gloria tonight, who is, uh, a neighbor who lives in an apartment that is not in either. The Wesley campus or the Greenwood Neighborhood Association. So there are a lot of different members of the community that are close to this campus that are part of this conversation. Uh, in addition to those conversations, I've walked the Wesley campus multiple times since this came up, uh, back in November. Uh, including, I, I even walked it with Scott Carlson and Kevin McAfee. And, uh, I've spent time looking at the campus from their backyard. Since the weather's gotten nice, I've walked thirty-seventh street myself, trying to pay attention to the visibility of the campus right now. And trying to envision what the new addition would look like. The other piece of this is I've seen over time, as there have been conversations, uh, with the neighborhood. I've seen the project and what, what is in front of us. I've seen Wesley make changes, uh, in an attempt to respond to neighbor concerns. Uh, and there've been several changes that have still been made since, uh, since this was first on our agenda two weeks ago. Uh, I will say that I think it's good for the entire community. That Wesley wants to keep investing in its campus and creating more and better amenities for its residents. And for the members of the community who use the campus for health and wellness. Uh, I particularly appreciate the Tudor architectural style that, uh, they've tried to adopt. For this set of campus changes. That architectural style ties into the original Chamberlain House, but it also, I think. Uh, helps the campus blend in better with the neighborhood. Uh, what, what I've sort of said to folks is I, I've looked at it and, and Rob in his comments today helped me date it since. Uh, a number of these things are either eighties or nineties, if it's been thirty plus years since, uh, since there've been additions. Uh, a large chunk of the campus has a nineties or eighties institutional look and adding. Uh, these additions with this architectural style, I think provides value to the neighborhood. And ties back in from, uh, from a historic campus perspective. I, I also wanted to touch on how I, how I've, I think the record reflects that. Uh, there've been several longstanding neighborhood concerns that have been addressed. Uh, one is the water feature in the front of campus. Is designed to increase stormwater detention and improve stormwater management on the campus. And I know that that has been a longstanding neighborhood concern. Uh, it's a concern with the Wesley campus. It's a concern with the MU. And my understanding is that these changes. Will, will actually improve the stormwater retention overall on the campus. And I think that's, that's an important piece of this project. Uh, I do want to see one change, uh, and, and I think staff in, in the materials in our packet said that we could make this change. Uh, and, and I'll get to it at the end, but I want to add a requirement to annually maintain the southern detention basin. Uh, and conduct annual inspections as a part of the PUD requirement. Uh, I think that's been a part of the, the discussions. Uh, and staff said that that is something that we can add to the PUD as part of this process. And I think that will only further, uh, address neighborhood concerns about, uh, the stormwater issues. Uh, another piece to this process that, that I think is a positive and should be recognized is that Wesley has put in writing. Uh, its previous commitment not to develop the woods at the southern part of the campus. And that's a, another major neighborhood concern and that, that is relevant to the question of. Concern about the creep and where, where the campus can go and Wesley's agreement. Uh, while I think they've said it in the past, no one has been able to, to track it down in writing. That will be in writing and that provides some assurance, uh, that, that the campus does not continue south into the neighborhood further. Um, I also wanted to, to talk about the, the parking piece and the connection to thirty-seventh. And I know back when we were first talking with the Neighborhood Association back in November. Uh, the proposal included, uh, I think even an, uh, egress and a way onto thirty-seventh from. Uh, from the existing parking lot. It was, that was paired back to, uh, just a proposal for eight additional parking spots. Uh, staff did not recommend that and ultimately that has been pulled. Um, so that the parking cannot extend any farther than the existing Bolton building in the front of the Bolton building, which is I believe right where the parking is now. Uh, I will note personally that in the future, I won't support extending any paved or developed portion of the campus. Uh, so no extension of the parking farther west than the front edge of the Bolton building. So I don't think there should be, uh, a connection to thirty-seventh there. And, and I'm glad that that was pulled back as part of this process and that's another. Uh, another example of this process working like it should and listening to the neighborhood concern. The piece of this proposal where there has not been agreement, uh, with either the neighbors or the Neighborhood Association, but that does have support. Well, I should say in terms of neighbors, the two most impacted neighbors. And I think we have to acknowledge that this does impact the McAfis and the Carlsons, uh, in ways it doesn't, uh, others. Because the McAfis and Carlsons, uh, live right next to this campus. Uh, and, and so this is a, a new building. Uh, and it will in some ways change, uh, change what they see out their backyard. Um, and that's, that's the piece that there hasn't been agreement, although I will say we've heard from, and I've heard from folks on the campus. I've heard from employees of Wesley who support, uh, this change. I've heard from people who don't live on the campus who support it, and I've heard from people who don't support it. So I've heard from folks on, on both sides of this. Uh, but what I did hear is that, and, and what I do think is a theme generally is that. Uh, the Neighborhood Association doesn't believe there should be building, any building on the west side of the campus. And, and I don't, uh, I don't agree, uh, when you're within the footprint of the existing campus. I think it's reasonable for Wesley to build vertically. Uh, and that the approach that they've taken with an attempt to design into the his, historic neighborhood. Uh, and within, within the limits, I think is a reasonable part of this process. Um, one of the things that we have seen, the aquatic center building and its initial proposal. Uh, extended, I believe, nine or ten feet farther west. And in response to neighborhood concerns, there was designed to move a portion, I think it was a waiting pool that's interior. Move that over to the south so that Wesley could back up, uh, back up the building. Uh, and in doing so, I think that created from what I've seen in the plans. Created, uh, an additional space where Wesley is planning on planting additional trees to further buffer the building. From the, uh, the adjoining neighbors. The other thing that Wesley has done specifically with this building is lowered the height from thirty-five feet down to thirty-two feet. And their response to questions about whether or not it could go lower, they pointed out that if it goes any lower. Uh, the building will no longer serve as a screen for the rooftop mechanicals. And there is a requirement, uh, there's a requirement in our code for rooftop mechanicals to be screened. Uh, partly because of the aesthetics and what not screening does, uh, in terms of impacting impacts to adjoining properties. So taking, taking it down further, there would need to be some sort of alternative to screen the mechanicals that wouldn't necess. Wouldn't match the aesthetic as well as the building itself does with the plan that Wesley has presented. I'll also note that if this wasn't a PUD, but if this area was zoned residential, uh, instead. We would allow by right under our zoning ordinance, a forty-two foot home. Uh, the height of the building that Wesley has proposed is thirty-two feet. And many of the homes on thirty-seventh street, uh, are forty-two feet, maybe even higher, uh, because they were built before that, that requirement of our code. So the height of the building and the design to blend in with the neighborhood is within. And I think is what is consistent with the feel of the neighborhood. The other piece of this is that Wesley's agreed to enter a landscaping agreement or has worked with the neighbors. Uh, to provide buffering and, and make a commitment, uh, to work with the neighbors on future landscaping. Uh, and I appreciate that Kevin recognized, uh, recognized that as, as a good faith effort. And, you know, I'm committed to working with the neighbors and Wesley to make sure that the landscaping is implemented. As designed over time, uh, and that that buffer, uh, gets planted and hopefully is an effective buffer, uh, between the neighbors and Wesley. gets planted and hopefully is an effective buffer between the neighbors and Wesley. And I recognize that the zoning issues like this, they do require balancing interests of different neighbors, Neighborhood Association, the the folks who live on the Wesley campus, and there are over three hundred some of those. And I'll note, you know, I think someone raised the question of property taxes. And while Wesley, Wesley is a nonprofit, the tower and the Bolton are both structured as cooperative condo units. And the residents there that are part of the Wesley campus do pay property taxes. And there's almost three hundred thousand in property taxes between the tower and the Bolton Building. So so this, this is about lots of folks in our community and it's about folks beyond just the the campus. It's about people like Gloria who live down the street and can walk to health and wellness, health and wellness activities. And it's about how this blends in with our larger community and efforts in the community and having having a strong Wesley Acres is important in that regard. You know, one of the things I heard from people is part of part of this process, I think I've heard from Wesley residents that moved to Wesley from all four wards in our city. So it is about more than just the folks on this campus today. Wesley is an amenity that serves our entire city. And so when I weigh all of these factors, I support the project and and I would like to move item fifty-nine. And I'd like to make one amendment, and that is to add the condition on the storm, the stormwater. And that's, do you need, I can read the whole thing, but I'd like to just use the language that staff suggested using in response to question five that was at the front of our of our packet. That reads, "The the property owner shall be required to annually submit a stormwater detention maintenance report to the city stormwater utility to demonstrate continued functional operation of the approved stormwater management improvements. In the event that said report does not demonstrate continued functional operation, the property owner shall comply with city recommendations to repair or maintain improvements within a timeline approved by the city's public works director or be subject to public nuisance or similar legal action by the city." So I'd like that to replace the, I think, the existing stormwater condition. But with that, I will move item fifty-nine.
All right, Carl.
Thank you, Mayor County. I have a, just a few questions for either Rob or Darren, if they're still available to answer some questions, please.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Darren. I can answer what I can and Rob's available too.
Sure, thank you. Um, so, um, is there a, a longer term Wesley Acres master plan or plan that ten or fifteen, even twenty years out? So where would your additional growth be after after these projects are completed? You're, obviously, there's no place more to go to the west. You've agreed, you're not going to go more to the south. So does that mean you're going to move to the east with additions to the campus?
Kay, if you could, I think that's a good question for Rob to answer, if that's all right. I'm a little bit more on the, in the weeds guy, so vision stuff is better for Rob. So you can cut me off, Kay, if you'd like and activate Rob.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, Carl, for the question. So we have a ten-year horizon, not necessarily a twenty-year horizon. And it's both programmatically as well as from a building site plan perspective. And so just so, not to go too far deep in this, but we have done a lot of market research on the front end before we got started with our master plan. And there is a tremendous amount of need, as you can imagine, the city of Des Moines, it's growing in the age cohorts of fifty-five and older, and particularly in the age seventy-five plus. So we're, we know that there's a strong demand for independent living. Our phase one, and I'll get back to, you know, our thoughts on independent living. But our, our next phase after this is internal renovation and internal expansion to focus in our short-term suite areas, which is a Stoddard Health Center, as well as replacing or adding to memory support needs. And that would be all internal to our campus. We have a spot that is in the lower level of the Stoddard Health Center, if you're familiar with the campus, but it's toward the back of the property. But it's not an external renovation. And then within five years, we need to explore and figure out how we can add additional independent living services either on the campus. If the Des Moines University situation changes from what it is currently, which is, as we would characterize, overpriced and with tremendous amount of academic buildings that don't lend themselves to a reuse for what we do. Or if we'll have a relationship with the condominiums that are up and down Grand Avenue, which wouldn't require any additional building on our campus. I hope that answers your question.
Sure. Well, if if you were going to grow to the east and you've got this new facility, the the pool and your, I think it's called the auditorium, right? On the west edge, does, does this make sense to expand on the west edge of the campus when your growth could be to the east?
There is no
DMU in particular.
Right. There's no promise that we will ever expand to the east. And secondly, we have an obligation, we feel, to create a situation on the front of the campus that's more pedestrian. I mentioned before our grand restoration board from several years ago. Grand Avenue is the walking neighborhood. And we have a lot of hardscapes that are planned on the front of the campus to try to bring the community and the neighborhood together. So it would be hard pressed to be able to put the type of amenities and also inside our campus. We're trying to organize our culinary and our wellness spaces as efficiently as possible.
Okay. Um, do you have planned operation hours for the pool? And the, the question here is, well, if this is going to be a glass lit up on the west edge of the building, you know, what, what are the expectations of the nearest neighbors?
Right, right. And I'm going to let Darren respond to that. He has the exact hours and can speak to lighting and those sorts of things. You'll need to unmute him, though.
Yeah, sorry for the ham and egg on this, guys. But yeah, the the pool hours that we currently have will stay in place. Our pool operation is is seven days a week and it goes from seven AM to eight PM. And there's no planned adjustments or changes to that.
Okay. And just one additional question, guys, or this might be for Burt from the city staff. And in in getting this, these additions snuggled into the west edge of the campus, do you feel that there's adequate drop off and turnaround space? It's pretty cozy there.
Yeah. So the, as you know, looking at the overall site plan that we were looking at previously, obviously, the the campus is a full loop. Obviously, for fire and and other uses. The, this area has an entrance and exit, but not a traditional drop off. We've actually expanded our drop off and and traffic area for drop off and pickup to the east side of the property. If you look at the site plan, there's still some ability to enter on the west side, especially right at the new additions. There's, there's just some a typical entrance at that location between these two new buildings. And then one down at the Wesley Grand, which is an existing entrance. That's just going to get renovated slightly to match the look that we're trying to capture with this Tudor expansion. But all of our drop off and turnaround is on the east side where our, our main entrance is now adjacent to the Chamberlain House.
Okay. And to both of you, should this
or Mike want to make comment on this? Bert Droste or Mike Ludwig? Either one of you want to make comment on that? It's like Bert.
Go ahead. Sure. Mayor, members of the council, Bert Droste, Deputy Planning Administrator. I, I'm not sure I understood the question entirely, but I do believe, I don't believe that they're proposing a drop off on that west side. If you look at their plan, they're just showing an entrance there between the pool and the auditorium additions. It doesn't look like they've, they're intending to have any drop off happening there. So from their site plan, it looks like just a double-loaded parking lot in that western portion.
Okay. So so it would be on the east side of the building then?
On the east or on the south? Or I guess, I'm sorry, in the northeast corner. I know there is a drop off there.
So, uh, and and just one last question to to Rob or Darren. Regard if, if we move forward on this, there's been discussion about a suitable landscaping buffering, both on the Wesley property and on the private homeowner's property. Are you still amenable to that, should we move forward on this?
Yeah, the, Carl, this is Darren again. Yes, of course we are. I think the comment that was made earlier, which was a part of an email that I did send to Scott Carlson, that the, the misconception there is that there are areas that are included in the exhibit, the agreement that we had, that we drafted and put together for Scott and Kevin.
Well, I think we lost you there.
Sorry, I'm back.
Okay.
Yeah. So as I was saying, the agreement that Scott referenced earlier and the email that I sent was a little out of context in the sense that there are, there's an exhibit that goes with that agreement with Scott and Kevin that wouldn't exist if the addition to the building wasn't built. So that's why it wouldn't be able to go into effect, because I'd have to redo it anyway. But being amenable, absolutely. We've, since day one, I stood on their properties and looked back at ours. It does nothing but, but be an advantage to them and to us to have that area full of full green trees of a number of different species. And that's what the landscape plan that we included in our packet of information shows. And Michael Gaunt from Bishop Engineering, who's a twenty-five-plus-year landscape architect, has been spearheading that. And we've done that collaboratively with Scott and Kevin through this period in time with them having an ability to chime in on how many trees, what kinds of trees, how big a trees. We've, we've literally been spending time together doing that. So absolutely, one hundred percent. I mean,
So if, if I'm reading the documents correctly, there's, there's some feeling that historically Wesley has promised landscaping that they didn't follow through on. And so there's even some residual, I don't want to say bad feelings. Some feelings that Wesley didn't hold true to their plans in the, in the past. And so like, you know, there's the, the old agreements, and then there's this new round of agreements. So there are trees that apparently several believe were supposed to be planted and never were.
Yeah. And unfortunately, Carl, my history is about two and a half years. I can't answer what the plan may have been in the past. But what we have put together collectively between Scott, myself, Bishop Engineering and Kevin is a plan that we executed an agreement to do and to live up to and to notify them of any of the plantings that were diseased or just or damaged if they had to be removed and then replaced. So I think, I think we, we've answered that question. And again, I can't speak to the the past, unfortunately, but I can tell you what's in place now is, is an agreement that we will do what we've said we're going to do, even to the extent that our last conversation between Scott, Kevin and Bishop Engineering, myself, is that when we go out to figure out where we're going to put trees, all four of us are out there placing the flags to make sure we get them in the right spot. I mean, that's how detailed it in the weeds we got on this plan.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
All right. Connie.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask on, so some of the concerns that have been brought up is any future development. And I know you have a ten-year plan. But any other building or anything like that would have to come before planning and zoning, just as this portion has been? If you would choose to build, whether you want to go to east or west, or you can't go west because there's nothing.
Mike?
Mayor County and members of the city council, Michael Ludwig, Deputy Director of Development Services. The property's own planned unit development. So any future amendments or proposals for for development of the property within the PUD boundary would have to come back before the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council.
Okay, thanks. I just want to comment too. I I've heard from both, both for and against. Many of the people that live on the property are very supportive of it because they believe they need that enhancement. And I understand, you know, the neighbors' concerns. I have driven around the campus. I have driven down Thirty Seventh Street. I've sat in the parking lot looking at the new plans. And the way they try to tie it all together versus what is there currently, I guess I look at it as an improvement to their backside or to their west side. And I don't believe that would be degrading to the neighborhood. I think they've tried to keep a style that looks better than, much better than what is there now. Again, this is a unique neighborhood because you have homeowners, but you also have all the residents that live there, plus the people around. I believe that this is a project that it's on their footprint. I believe it's an amenity that adds to their campus. And I would be supportive of what they're trying to accomplish. As long as they adhere to all the stormwater issues. I know there's been revisions. They've lowered the height. They've shortened how far it's going to come out. I think there's going to be a lot more trees added, shrubbery added, more complete landscaping that probably that's been done in a, I don't know if it ever really was totally done in a uniform way. So I think with all the changes, I think they have tried to make as many changes as they can to enhance what will be for the neighborhood. That's all I, questions I had.
Okay, did I see one?
You did. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir. I, I've, you know, we've received lots and lots of emails about this project. And I appreciate the work that everybody has put into it. I know Wesley Acres, I know the neighborhood, I know the ward council person, they've all worked to make this project work. I'm still not comfortable with voting to support this. I think there's been too many emails that have gone back and forth that I've read where, you know, one party didn't want to meet and the other party says, yes, they would meet. But I don't know, for whatever reason, I just wish that the neighborhood and Wesley Acres would have been able to work this out long ago. So I would support, you know, building on all sides except the west end. I would really like to see us put the west side on hold and let everybody go back and sit down at the table and work out their differences. I just think that And work out their differences. I just think that's what has to be done.
Okay, Joe.
Mayor, Mayor, thank you. Just a follow up question to Carl's about the landscaping in Kevin and Scott Carlson's yard. And I believe Wesley Acres have spoken to them. Are Scott and Kevin not agreement that they want additional trees like this is passed? And maybe one of them can jump on or both of them, but I I would really like to see that screening inside their property. Along with Wesley Acres screening their property. I believe, and Josh pointed it out very clearly, that those two properties are the ones most affected. With this expansion, so I'd really like to make sure that they have their proper screening as part of the motion. Thank you.
Yeah, Kevin, you were asked a quick question, you want to make quick comment on this?
Yeah, and I appreciate that comment, and I also appreciated the offer. We were fortunate to purchase a property that already had really excellent landscaping, and so right now. There are very mature trees that exist that provide the buffer. And without consulting with our landscaping professional. Don't see that there's actually a spot. Because the current trees are, you know, at least 15 feet. So I I think it would be hard to place additional. Landscaping on that fence line, but there could be. Other options, but it doesn't provide that immediate buffer.
Darren, did you want to make comment?
Yeah, just one quick additional comment on the last plan that we did with Kevin. Working specifically on his view. We actually did propose, as you know, Kevin mentioned, we proposed to. And offered to add some landscaping to his side of the fence if that would be helpful. And of course, that's totally up to him. But we did on our side. Proposed taking out two of our parking spots. And creating an area for a much larger species tree. To be planted from a nursery in Oxford, Iowa that specializes in larger species. So again, just just wanted to reiterate an extra level that we are trying to go to 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 create that buffer, and I know. Joe, you had that question, but I wanted to add that in there because I hadn't brought that up earlier.
So you are taking out two parking spots and putting that additional tree in? Is that what I'm hearing from you?
Yeah, Joe, that's that's something that most recently Kevin and I discussed. And we showed on a rendering, I don't know that our placement was in the right spot when we showed him the rendering because I had our architect do it pretty quick. But that was a commitment I made to Kevin as well as an offer to place any additional trees in his yard if. That type of screening would be more advantageous to him.
Okay, and that'll be part of the motion, Josh, correct, that all the screening that was agreed upon with Kevin and. And Wesley Acres, you'll make that part of the motion that that gets done before they get a certificate of occupancy?
I'm happy to make the landscaping. A part of this motion, and I think we'll also have another opportunity because the site plan itself. Will still need to come before council is my understanding.
Correct.
So we'll have two opportunities to to make sure we get the the landscaping right, but. Joe's Joe's comment is a friendly amendment, and I'm happy to add that. To this process.
That'd be great, and I'd be very supportive of this project with that as part of the motion.
Good, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. I kind of agree with Linda's comments. You know, we wish there'd been a little bit more collaboration between the two. That's always a concern because, you know, I I really want to make sure our neighborhoods grow and flourish and and people can live in a. A city that is going to enhance their their amenities. We we had a little bit of the same over here, just a couple blocks from my house at Calvin Community. And just about the same kind of pushback. Then the neighbors had towards their Calvin West Edition that started in 2017. And with good stormwater detention changes. Good tree management. The the two parties came together and we we actually got the product, the project started. And both sides were happy, so I I was hoping we would get to that here at Wesley, but I think with all the. Amendments that we put in here and friendly amendments. I think we've got a a solution that that we can move forward on, so I too am going to be supportive of it.
Okay. Let's. Josh, do you quickly? Want to restate your motion?
Sure, so I'm moving item 59, and Mayor, do you want me to reread the the language that was? That I read earlier on the.
I think that's okay, let's just acknowledge the amendments.
Okay, move item 59 with an amendment to. To have annual inspection and reporting on the stormwater detention basin to the south. Portion of the property and an amendment to ensure that the landscaping plan is. Executed in advance of any certificate of occupancy.
Okay. Let's go ahead and ask the motion, let's pull the council.
County.
Yes.
Boson.
Yes.
Boss.
All right. Yes, and I just wondered, I I had my hand up, but the pool hours, is that something that we can? We can address this way or not? There's been some concern that there would be pool hours way into the night, is that? Within our approval to to actually do that? Sorry, I had my hand up, Mayor, but but you probably didn't notice. I don't know if that's a question for Bert or for. The Wesley life staff or for Josh?
I I thought they said the pool was open from eight to eight, is that not right?
It was seven to eight, yeah, well, that's what it is right now, but. There were, there's been concern that it's going to be open until. Until midnight or such, so I didn't know if that would ease some of the. Pushback from the neighbors that the pool would be open way into the evening, so.
Darren, I apologize. Generally, after we have a motion, we don't take amendments, but we're going to go ahead and let you respond to this.
Yeah, thank you. From an operational standpoint and based on our based on our resident clientele and our our staffing, I don't. I don't believe that after 8pm is going to be an issue for us, it's how we've operated for some time at that community. But, yeah, I I I don't know exactly how to answer, quite honestly, other than that's that's been a very. Common set of hours for us, and I don't think anyone in our community would want to use the pool after 8pm. I think our use actually goes down pretty dramatically after the dinner hour, to be honest. Actually, Janet Simpson, who is our VP of Operations here, she said after lunch, it gets pretty slow.
Okay, thank you, Darren.
Yep.
So Carl, what's your vote?
Remove my comment, yes.
Good.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
No.
Mandelbaum. Gatto.
Yes.
Your Honor, that's six, one, motion carries.
All right. Let's move on to item 60, item 60 is on the proposition to authorize master equipment lease agreement. In the principal amount of not to exceed $275,000 for the purpose of acquiring certain items of equipment. Consisting of up to 11 Nissan Leaf electric vehicles.
I'll move item 60, Your Honor.
Okay, it's moved, let's quickly ask if there's any general public germane comments to this issue. Jeriann.
Yeah, this is Jeriann Mainz, she/her pronouns, I was just wanting to speak up and comment. And just, I guess, more question why we spent so much time just talking about that. You guys never entertained any conversations regarding black lives for this long ever. So that's very telling of what you guys prioritize. Yes, my name is Jeriann Mainz, you think I'm not being germane, for gosh sakes, county, calm down.
All right, that's enough, thank you, next. Is there anybody else up there that's Jalen?
Hey, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay, sorry, what's going on here? Yeah, so I'm speaking on item 60, just wondering. I I do support, you know, of course, switching to, you know, electric vehicles, I think it's important that the city. Moves away from, you know, fossil fuels as quickly as possible, so I think that that is a a good sign. I'm curious how far this will go and and I know that there's like new cruisers that are being bought for the Des Moines Police Department. So I'm wondering, are are there plans to buy electric vehicles for the police department? What are these 11 vehicles going to be used for in the fleet? Because I do have concern about the new Des Moines Police Department cruisers that I've seen being bought. They're very fancy, they look like they cost a lot of money, I think it's, you know, really unnecessary spending, I think we should be selling Des Moines Police Department cruisers if I'm being honest with you. And maybe that could free up some more money for some more electric vehicles for the city fleet, you know, folks who work for the city that actually need to use vehicles. That aren't going to be using them to just drive around the city and harass and harm black people.
Indira.
Hi, this is Indira Schumaker, she/her. I know Peyton Schumaker wanted to speak on this item, but she was cut off for no reason. So I'm just going to say what she was going to say, I would like to know what these are going to be used for because there is nothing on. The items in the agenda that are describing what these cars are being used for, just that you're buying 11 Nissan Leaf electric vehicles. So I would like a response, what are these cars for?
Nick, if you might be able to help on this, I know it's a a couple of different departments, mostly with inspectors, correct?
Yes, this is Nick Shaw, Finance Director of City of Des Moines. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, the 10 of these vehicles are for the neighborhood services inspectors. And then there is one for the engineering department currently in this 11 that we are looking to to lease at this time.
Thanks, Nick. Let's go back and see if there's. Denver.
Hello, Denver Foot, she/her pronouns. I guess I'm glad that to hear that these electric vehicles aren't going to the police department. But I would like to take in consideration, I know $275,000 may not seem much to City Council when we spend millions on multi. Million dollar developers. But what if we took this $275 from the police budget, they are bankrupting our city, so why don't we take money? From the budget and divert that into things that we need, like electric vehicles, electric buses, solar panels. And I wanted to uplift Peyton, she should be able to speak, and that is all, thank you.
All right, let's go to our council members, it looks like Josh, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to to say that I'm pleased to see this moving forward. I I do think we need to continue to to look, and I know. Nick and folks over at Finance and our fleet fleet folks, I think are in the process of looking at a broader. Vehicle transition, you know, we've identified. Vehicles like this that I think are in 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 sort of the the low hanging fruit, probably the the first 150 or so vehicles. And then there there are other vehicles that are harder to electrify, and there aren't necessarily as good options on the market today. But I think we need to continue to be mindful of how we transition, and this is, this continues to be a good step in that direction.
All right. And you have a motion?
I think Councilmember Gatto already moved it, but if he didn't, I'm happy to move it.
Yeah, he did.
All right.
Oh, I moved it, Mayor.
All right, thanks, Joe. All right, seeing no other, would you pull the council, please?
County.
Yes.
Boson.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Gatto.
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, item 61, on the matter of proposed authorization of a loan and disbursement agreement. And issuance of not to exceed $3,750,000. Stormwater management, utility revenue, capital, loan notes, and the issuance thereof. A is the authorization for additional action. Will quickly open it up and see if there's any germane comments to this proposed. Disbursement regarding stormwater.
Mayor, if if there's not, I'll move 61, 61A.
All right. 61 and 61A have been moved. Pull the council, please.
County.
Yes.
Boson.
Yes.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Gatto.
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, item 62 is on the matter of a proposed authorization of a loan and disbursement agreement. And the issuance of not to exceed $28,750,000 sewer revenue, capital, loan notes. And the issuance thereof, A is the authorization for additional action. Again, let's ask.
Your Honor, 62 and 62A.
All right, it's been moved, and I'll quickly open it up, see if there's any germane comments from the general public. Looks like we have Amanda.
This is Amanda, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Let Peyton speak, let Peyton.
All right. Do we have a motion on item 62? Joe, you made the motion, right?
I moved it, Your Honor.
All right, let's pull the council.
County.
Yes.
Boson.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Gatto.
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, item 63, on the East Douglas Avenue reconstruction, this is East 42nd Street to East 56th Street. A resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, the engineer's estimate. And to receive and file bids and designate the lowest responsible. and to receive and file bids and designate the lowest responsible builder is bidder is Elder Corporation Jared R. Elder II, President, six million, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Council Communication Number Two One Oh Five A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Counsel, any comments on this? East Douglas Avenue reconstruction.
No, your honor, if there are no comments, I would like to move sixty-three and sixty-three A.
All right. I don't see any eligible ones. Adam, it's been moved. Would you please pull the council?
County?
Yes.
Bowson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Item sixty-four, which is on the animal control facility. This is a resolution approving plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate receiving above bids, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as graphite construction. However, the city manager has had some further negotiations. And I think a lot of us have had some thoughts and concerns about this. And after a number of productive discussions and careful consideration, we have decided to postpone the construction of the animal control facility near Harriet. I think this will allow us additional time to reassess and reconsider the scope and the features and the use of that facility so that better serves the needs of our community and our partner, the Animal Rescue League. While we're all eager to get this thing moving, delaying it will provide us a potential possibility of some federal funding options that go beyond the Des Moines taxpayer. And a little additional time will also allow us to better invest in more energy efficient design and construction such as geothermal and top-notch insulation and those sorts of things. So Scott, you want to make a quick comment here?
No, I think actually you covered it. We see this with the discussions in DC the last couple of days as a real opportunity. So I think it's prudent to actually delay.
So Scott, do we need to make a motion to reject all bids and go back to the drawing board? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes. Well, just simply to reject all bids.
So you moved it, Joe?
I will make the motion to reject all bids for item sixty-four.
All right. Let's pull the council on this one.
County?
Yes.
Bowson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Did you say yes?
I said yes.
Okay. Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, item sixty-five is on consideration the recommended capital improvement program plan, CIP, for the fiscal years twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six. Council Communication Number Twenty-One dash zero-nine-seven, A is declaring an official intent under Treasury Regulation one point one five dash two to issue debt to reimburse the city for certain original expenditures paid in connection with specified projects. Scott, you want to quickly make a comment on this?
Yes, mayor, if I could. Thank you. So this, I'm going to make comments that will pertain to all the remaining budget items that we have for tonight. Excuse me. First off, I want to thank everyone for their involvement in the budget process this year, especially the finance staff and the departments working through the different options that we have available to us within our budget. And then, of course, the many council conversations that we've had and the input that we've received from the public. This budget is obviously a point in time. I want to remind council, as just the previous item indicated, the situations do change with opportunities arising when least expected even at times. This budget that's before you has a start date not until July of this year, and will go all the way through June of twenty-twenty-two. So it's very likely elements within our budget will change, and we need to be prepared for that and be nimble. And so I ask for your ability to do that as we bring up potential changes throughout the year. We will be transitioning to, obviously, post-COVID with additional businesses opening up. That will be part of our need to remain flexible as we do not know at this point what some of those needs might be of our community over the next several months and those additional requests that may come to us. So we would expect to have amendments possibly even as soon as this summer that we may need to adjust on, especially again with the conversations over the weekend out in DC. So kind of back to the actual budget and what remains in this budget and what has actually changed since our most recent conversations at the budget workshops. This budget overall continues its commitment to maintaining service levels to our residents and our businesses as have been expected and indicated in service levels with our every other year's survey. There's a commitment that remains, obviously, with our public safety, with our infrastructure growth that we are continuing to catch up on, our quality of life initiatives. All of that still remains in this budget as a strong commitment. We have also kept the tax rate the same at the sixteen dollars and sixty-one cents per thousand. We have continued to make adjustments with COVID-nineteen estimations on changes to our revenues as well as additional expenses that have needed to be incurred. We've continued to process through federal funds through the CARES Act, assisting our businesses directly, putting some of that, quite a bit of that money into housing assistance. Now, most recently, childcare and mental health needs. We've continued the reorganization of two of our larger departments. We have added in this budget additional resources to equity. We have continued commitment to starting the property improvement program. We are looking into the broadband, which I hope to bring back to you here within a matter of a few weeks. We, at council's request, additional funds have been added to areas like tree plantings, spray ground and playground equipment replacements, additional funding for sidewalk improvements. We have a historic preservation plan that will be put in place as we receive some additional state funding to pay for that. We are moving up the Second Avenue improvements between Grand Avenue and the interstate by year. We have identified a position that can be replaced with some contractual services for savings for the next cycle. So we have quite a bit of changes that have been brought to our attention. There's, in addition to that list, additional resources will be put into our crisis response team that will be both in private resources and within our own police department for additional resources in responding to mental health needs. You heard recently about the opportunity to pursue Cure Violence. That will be pursued and available funds will be made for that project as well. Coming back to you with an RP first to finalize the details of the Cure Violence. So mayor and council, I want to appreciate all the time that's been spent on this budget. I did ask that Nick spend just a minute to overview the process that we've been through. And both he and I, at the conclusion of his comments, will be available for any questions. Nick, if you're available, I would ask that you take over the next part.
Thank you, Scott. And hello again, mayor and council members. Nick Shaw, Finance Director, City of Des Moines. As Scott alluded to, I'm just going to kind of touch base on the schedule that we had in this, for this budget schedule for for everyone, as well as kind of highlight, this is kind of, this is the type of process that we go through each year with the was affected a little bit with COVID, with what we did with informational videos and the webinar for the educational purposes. But all in all, it is very similar to what we do on our timeline. What we ended up doing to start off the budget process is we had our workshop to discuss the budget timeline and input on the budget process. That's usually about the second meeting in October. And then we released the informational videos and opened up the public comment and questions to the city that we could then address through the webinar process and thereafter. And so we had our webinar that allowed for public questions to be submitted and addressed at that meeting as well as after after that webinar as well. The next step on the process was actually releasing our preliminary operating budget, CIP book, to the council and to the public, as well as discussing that, that those books from those preliminary standpoints at the February twenty-third workshop as well, where we kind of covered a lot of the topics in greater detail, and then had additional input from the council to make any alterations. And as Scott highlighted, we did make some alterations based off of the priorities of the council from that workshop meeting. From there, it also goes through the process of approving notices of public hearing for both the maximum property tax dollar, which is the transparency bill that the state passed, started last fiscal year, that talked about the max property taxes that we could then incorporate in our budget. And that will tend to be the second meeting in January to approve that notice, to hold the meeting in the first meeting in February. And then what we are doing tonight is holding the public hearing from the notice that was approved in the second meeting in February to adopt the budget, hopefully to adopt the budget for the certified budget to be due to the Pope County Auditor's Office by the end of the month. And through this process, we are trying to allow for citizen engagement as well as addressing questions, concerns from the council throughout the whole process and trying to make sure that everybody's comfortable with what is being brought up for the council for vote tonight. And I'm here available for any other questions or concerns.
All right, thank you, Nick. Linda, I see your hand up.
It is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the Finance Department and Nick and Scott for the budget that we're about to approve tonight. You know, we received a very thick book, and it was so much easier to understand. I don't think we've ever received a budget book that has been so laid out in such a way that it was so easy to understand. So I just wanted to thank Nick and the Finance Department for their work.
Thanks, Linda. All right, let's quickly go over and check our attendees. Indira?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I would just like to say that, I'd like to ask, really, as we're starting this budget discussion, what specific changes have been made in the budget based on resident input, constituent input? You guys have been getting recommendations since at least December twenty-second. I would like to know what specific results are coming from that.
You want to give a quick mention?
So actually, the items I've already mentioned have been brought up by the public. The mental health, and specifically with the crisis response, has been something that's been brought up at other council meetings. Clearly, the Cure Violence is something that's top of mind for a lot of our residents, wanting to try different opportunities there. The list of most recent changes, again, were also subject to input from the general public, the tree care and the planting. Obviously, playground replacement is something that we hear an awful lot about, wanting to get caught up with those. We still have some play areas, excuse me, some parks without play equipment. So that was brought up as well. Sidewalks. Let's see, that was would be the main news.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on. Elena Simon? Can you unmute yourself? There you go.
Let Peyton speak!
Guadalupe Maro?
Thank you. I just wanted to add, I'm still a little confused on sixty-five because of what Indira mentioned, but also because we totally just let Mayor Frank County disrespect Peyton, and you all need to check your emails. She did email y'all. Y'all need to let Peyton speak.
Adam Callanan?
Hello, yes, my name is Adam Callanan. He/him pronouns. I think that it's fairly obvious that there's been an outcry from the public, and that outcry from the public is not to keep increasing the police budget and to cut money from houseless services. But that's exactly what this budget does. It's gross. And not just is it gross, it's also gross that Scott Sanders will come on here and lie and say that's what the public wants. We know that it isn't. Everybody knows it. I'm glad the city is moving towards Cure Violence. That is good. There are some things that we can agree on through all this, but really mainly need to be letting Peyton speak. She was cut off for no good reason, really no reason at all, other than Mayor County's ego. That is all.
All right, let's let's quickly go to Peyton. I have a communication here that she said that she was confused. So Peyton, why don't you make your comment at this time?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, yeah, thank you so much for finally responding to my email. Yeah, I was confused. I just wanted to make germane comments to this. So I think that we really need to be looking into the budget. Yeah, I think that obviously any increases to the budget should be taken out of the police department budget because, as we all know, they only use that money to terrorize the citizens. So I just wanted to say that if we want to give money to other things, which obviously we need to be doing, it should come out of the police budget. Thank you.
Yes, it terrifies non-citizens.
Jalen?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, this is Jalen again. He/him pronouns. Speaking on item sixty-five, this budget is not good. It's not what the people of Des Moines are asking for, not what we want to see at all from our city government. But once again, y'all are prioritizing your plans for gentrification, your own personal relationships with developers and landlords, and the police department, which we know is violent and racist, specifically on item sixty-five, which we're talking about the Capitol Improvement Program Plan. One major red flag I see on here is seven-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars that's going to be spent on police building improvements. Not really sure why we would spend almost a million dollars to improve the police station, which does house the violent and racist Des Moines Police Department. Instead, we should be packing their bags, packing up their office supplies, and getting them out of that building. You know, that could be a location for a new houseless or low-income unit that, you know, we could put people in so that we have less people sleeping on the streets. We should not even have a police building. You know, what happened in Minneapolis Um we should not even have a a police building. Um you know, what happened in Minneapolis um when uh I never mind actually, but I'll just say that we should not have this police building and we should not be spending almost a million dollars to improve it. Instead, we should be putting money to help out houseless folks and low income folks in our city. Once again, this budget does not prioritize the people who live here and instead prioritizes your own interests and continuing the racism, continuing the oppression of black and brown and low income people who live in this city. You all should be embarrassed as city council people. Look in the mirror tonight and ask yourselves, what am I doing to help the people of Des Moines? I promise you, it is nothing.
It looks like there's a um an NR.
Sorry, Your Honor, I can't uh open that one because it isn't a current Zoom and I would have to promote to a panel.
Let's go to John Franks.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I wanted to echo a lot of those comments. Um especially wanted to call out that it's been made clear um by Scott Sanders, actually, that in a few years, the uh increases to police pay are going to become too much for the city to keep up with. Um and I was wondering if anybody from the city wanted to speak up on what the plan was for dealing with that. Um because it's something that must have been considered, obviously considered since Scott knew about it months ago. Um so y'all must have been considering it through this process. Okay, I was just wondering what the solution was there and what path y'all had forward so that DMPD does not literally bankrupt this city.
All right, Connie Lester.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Connie Lester, she her pronouns. Um I wanted to ask a question. Um I want to know how the budget has been affected since uh Des Moines Public Schools will no longer be utilizing SROs. Um congratulations to them for making that decision. Um and to the student activists who made that happen, congratulations. Um but before you answer my question, please, I want to um just point out that the supposed meeting that we had where the we had like a community discussion um about the pu- the budget, okay, um that wasn't a community discussion. That was a pre-planned presentation that
Okay, Molly Art.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um I would just like to echo the comments of a lot of folks before me. Um I'm just kind of wondering why after, you know, it's been months and months and months of so many people coming on these meetings and asking you to defund DMPD, uh you've decided to do the opposite and actually increase their budget. That just seems inconscionable and like you aren't really listening to your constituents because there are so many things that we need here in Des Moines that could like actually really help people. Um and yet you're continuously refusing to do that and now you're you're giving more money back to DMPD. That just doesn't seem like you're governing very well or really at all. Uh you're actually actively harming people. So yeah, I think I I don't think you should um be able to pass this budget. Thank you.
Denver Foot.
Hello, Denver Foot, she her pronouns. I wanted to uplift everyone who has spoken against uh giving more funding to the Police Department. Um I know that is your responsibility to hold Scott Sanders uh up to what the budget he puts together. You blindly allow him to put this budget together and then you let it pass. Um that isn't correct. You are elected officials. You should be looking out for your constituents. Um if we could think about a Des Moines that we have a beautiful future in, um where we diverge funding from the Police Department. We actually do something with this twenty-four-seven carbon-free resolution that just recently passed doing community solar power panel project, you know, to help lower energy costs for low-income housing. Um and you know, making more green spaces and not complexes. It's just a future of Des Moines that we could have, but you continuously stand in our way and we understand that the only way to get what we want is to vote city council members out.
Brad Beisemeyer. Can we get Brad on?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Cool. Um just wanted to echo some of the past comments we've had. Um namely, Jalen, um a lot of people who have come up after him and built off of what he was talking about with DMPD. Um just have a kind of related concern, I suppose, because it's related to public safety. Um when we're talking about item sixty-five, I'm just curious why there isn't any kind of money being allocated to making sure that we're securing polling locations and making sure that they're staying safe to the public. Um we all know last week that um there's a pipe bomb found in Ankeny at one of their special elections. And uh I, you know, I'm a little alarmed by that, obviously, as like a development. Um and we're, I mean, we're so close to Ankeny. Um I'm just curious why we're not doing anything or even acknowledging that uh there was like a direct attack on our supposed democracy. Um yeah, wondering if we could speak on that, maybe get some money allocated towards that instead of a Police Department um that we know is inherently racist, sexist and oppressive.
Hi.
Okay, it looks like there's a uh five, four, three, one number. Not sure, there's no name attached.
I have no way of knowing who that is.
Okay, do you want to see if they
You want me to call him? Okay. To unmute, you have to hit star six.
Hey, Mayor, Council, this is Brenda McDonald. Um I don't usually chime in when you're doing these things, but I will tonight because we don't need to take money from the DMPD. That is our safety and that is the majority of the people speaking, especially in light of the two recent shootings in the past week, one of which was a two-year-old little boy. Safety is the utmost concern of the citizens of this city and this state. And that is what the majority of the people would vote for if it was put to a vote. So a select few of people calling in under different names saying the same thing over and over does not make it the right thing to do. Thank you.
Justin Lewis.
Hello, Council. Um this is pertaining to the budget, correct? Would that be germane?
That's it.
All right. I'm sorry, this may be a little ungermene. I've been waiting to speak on a different topic. Um speaking about equity, please.
Hello.
Government. Um so are we still doing public comment after this county? Are we still there? Hello.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to go back to have the um individuals speak, public speaking.
Okay, well, then I I will table this moment right now and then I would like to address a few things about, you know, being more aware of uh our citizens and how we can continue to get them involved and get microdata from them. So I will table myself and then I'll I'll push myself back to public comment. Thank you.
Emily McGuire.
Hi, this is Emily McGuire, she hers. So I'm currently a public health student, getting a master's in public health, and I actually focus on um how policing negatively impacts the health in our society um and preventing violence through public health initiatives rather than um policing and adding more money to our police force. So I'm curious if my council member can follow up with me about uh parts in the budget that are going to be public health measures. And then also, I'd just like to reiterate everyone saying that the Des Moines Police Department does not need more money. We can back it up with research. People do not feel safer when the police are around. People are not safer when the police are around. And so if you feel safe when the police are around, please check your privilege. Thank you.
Uh Bridget.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh my name is Bridget. I use uh she her pronouns and uh I would uh like to speak on uh not giving any more money to the Police Department. They are bankrupting the city. Um yeah, that's really all I have to say. Also, um I want to respond to uh Justin Lewis's call for more citizen input. Where have you been? We, the citizens, have been attending these meetings for months, giving input. What more what more input could you possibly need? Defund DMPD.
Uh three, five, four, oh, the phone number.
Please hit star six to unmute yourself. Phone number nine, seven, one, three, five, four, zero. Please hit star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Deborah Howell. Sorry you didn't recognize me. Um I just wanted to say that I've been listening to this all night and it gets a little ridiculous all this time. Let me start off with I'll probably upset someone, so I think we're supposed to say trigger warning. Because here it goes. Please do not defund the police again. Out of the twenty-two manslaughterers or twenty twenty cases in the last year, they have um found the uh taking care of all but two. So to make this city safe, we need to keep our law enforcement there. They're doing an excellent job. For years, it's now they have proved the numbers that they're a good police department.
Hi.
I'm
All right. Do we have uh we've got some public input? Do we have uh a a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move sixty-five and sixty-five A, sir.
All right, sixty-five and sixty-five A has been moved uh on the capital improvement program. Hold the council, please.
County.
Yes.
Boson.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Gatto.
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
If you don't, I'll take it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, item sixty-six is on the amendment to the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-one, Council Communication number twenty-one dash zero nine seven. Scott, I'll have you make a quick comment on this.
Yeah, and and we spelled out for the council and the public in the blue letter of the Council Communication. The amendments, actually, I I'm just going to open it up to for Nick and I to answer any questions that there may be.
Council, any questions regarding the budget uh amendment uh for the budget ending this this current year on June thirty?
If not, I'll move item sixty six.
All right, let's uh quickly open it up. The item's been moved. Uh we've got a couple, three, uh no, we got a one speaker, Jalen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Cool, so I just want to um, you know, go back to what I was saying previously about the budget and how the city council has done nothing to help out the people of Des Moines. Um also looking really into this budget and y'all's proposals. Um I see that you're calling for about a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars to be given to public safety. About half of that, over half of that, um of course, is going to be allocated to the violent and racist Des Moines Police Department. What's curious, though, is within these public safety dollars that are being out advocated, um there's zero money that's going to be given out for mental health, um which I think we can all agree is a public safety issue. Um or or harm reduction, um when it comes to folks who uh are maybe um addicted to substances, um which again is a public safety issue. Instead, we're spending money on guns, bullets, bombs, tanks, tear gas, rubber bullets, pepper spray. Um you know, fancy new police vehicles that they can then use to over-police and hyper-police black and brown neighborhoods um and harass our houseless community.
Peyton.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, uh first, I was just wondering if Nick or whoever was offering to open up to answer questions, if that was uh open to the public as well, if you could answer questions from us. On
Do you have a a a quick one, Peyton?
Um I'm just wondering, because I think that, you know, the budget should be for the people. So if like the people have questions, I just don't think that it should be limited just to like answering questions from council. So if people in the public have questions, I think they should get them answered as well.
So we've answered a couple of the questions moving on that uh are sitting uh with our uh financial people here. This is uh for the uh amendment to the current year's budget, which ends in you know, three, four months.
Okay, well, I just wanted to say that uh well, this budget should obviously be for the people because it's uh spending our tax dollars. So uh that's all I really wanted to say is that um it should be a people's decision and it should all be open to the people.
Indira.
Hi, this is Indira Shoemaker, pronouns she her. Um talking on the amended budget, it looks like this year, I know we had um some interesting circumstances, um but I also wanted to note that council sat on um relief money from the federal government for months at a time, like five or six months at a time, um that is only now getting spent. It took a year to get rent um assistance to people, so I don't really know who that's helping. Um the people could afford to stay in their apartment for a whole entire year of unemployment, sickness, um other kinds of issues. I also want to note that we overspent forty-six million and forty-five million in the capital projects and the special revenue um budgets uh in the funds there. Uh we did underspend or didn't get, you know, money from debt service, uh about fifty-eight million, but we still overspent. Um so your amended budget, like, it's just like indicating that you guys didn't, you know, weren't honest about what you were planning to spend. Um so I'm concerned about that. Um and just like, there's been a lot of stuff added, like a million dollars in uh it looks like finance as well.
Hi.
Do you want to say? All right, um just, I'll make one quick comment. I won't uh poll either Nick or Scott in on this, but some of those dollars, if there was a delay, we try to push it out as quickly as possible. Uh we lacked uh on a couple of occasions, federal um directives and guidelines on how that money should actually be spent and pushed out. So we were delayed on getting it out and we were disappointed in doing that. Adam Callanan.
Hello, my name is Adam. I is he him pronouns. I wanted to speak about the budget and how it's kind of sold to the public as, you know, they like prioritize public safety. Um but what we've seen in the the like the studies that say But what we've seen in the, like, the studies that say Des Moines safe is, what they're talking about is just homicides. Des Moines doesn't have a lot of homicides and that's great. The reason why Des Moines doesn't have a lot of murders is not because of the violent police department. And adding more money to the police department is not going to make us have more quote-unquote public safety. Public safety looks like being prepared for things like the ratio. It looks like being prepared to keep people housed. When crisis, like crises, like the pandemic happened, but also just in general, people should be housed. And so I don't know, I just, I get kind of upset, not as upset, but like. I don't like when people are just blatantly lying to me, and that's what it feels like is happening whenever we talk about public safety and then just talk about quote-unquote crime. I want to see a public safety approach that actually looks at public health and actually looks at providing for people and keeping people safe. That's all.
Looks like we have two more. Amanda Morton.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? I just got muted.
No, we can hear you.
I did get muted, but thank you, Amanda. She/her pronouns. I wanted to make sure it was on record that there was no public. Input on this budget. You guys acted like there was, but when it came time for the meeting, it was a. Like a presentation done by Scott Sanders ahead of time. There wasn't opportunity for questions. He had a list of questions that we wrote in. That he had prepared to answer previous to the meeting, so it was not a public discussion on the budget. And I would just like to read something, let's see here. Scott specifically said with his bias. That he would not label an item as controversial simply because a group of ill-informed residents are not aware of how state law and civil services work. So Scott believes we're all stupid in the community, and I wanted to make sure everybody knew that. He thinks that we're being disruptive when we talk down under.
Denver.
Hello, Denver. She/her pronouns. I wanted to uplift everything that everyone said before me. I definitely resonate with what Adam said about public safety. What does public safety look like to you? Does it look like giving more funding to the police department? In this last budget that we're just finishing up, they got thirty-nine percent of the city budget. Imagine what we could do if we put that towards real public safety and not beating people with batons, macing. And treating mental health issues with violence. We could have. Communities that flourish, that look out for each other and help each other. I just wanted to uplift that vision. For you all to see, because I feel like you get stuck in a sphere and you see this idea and these thoughts. And it's very hard to break out of.
Alright, let's go back. Do we have a motion on item sixty-six?
I moved it, Frank.
Alright, thank you. Thanks, honey. Pull the council, please.
County.
Yes.
Boson.
Yes.
Boss.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Gatto.
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Alright, takes us to item sixty-seven on the proposed budget for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty-two. Council Communication. Number twenty-one dash zero nine seven. Again, I want to thank our staff, Scott and Nick. On a great job and presentation and a very. A descriptive handout for the, the council to review and, and also the general public. But let's, counsel, any? Connie?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, because this is for the proposed budget, ongoing budget. And I do want to thank the finance staff for putting everything together and also to our manager and. Having discussion with him about the, many of people have already brought up about the need for more mental health. Work being done. So we have a commitment now that we will be able to get a twenty-four-seven mental health mobile crisis unit going. Currently, we do not have it in anything to cover for all twenty-four hours with the trained staff. That really can address the needs of the people. We are working with Polk County and Broadlawn's. And to develop the delivery of the care and how we can do, what programs we can have, whether it be. For the mental health or sobering centers, different things. And those programs will cover both adults and adolescents. One of the goals from AMIS was that we have an adolescent mental health program. And hopefully, this will, the goal is to divert individuals away from, you know, the criminal justice system and help individuals. In a much better way, so they can get the help that they need. We know that there's programs throughout the country. There's a STAR program that was brought, you know, brought up through a neighborhood. And also the COOT program that have been successful. And so I'm looking forward to working with. The Polk County Broadlawn's and all the groups to see what we can bring in a new way to deliver service in Des Moines. So I just wanted to highlight that that's something that's within this budget also.
Alright, Carl.
Oh, thank you, Mayor County. Um, yes, I, I would like to add an accent to. To Connie's comments about the mental health issues and there's, I think there's going to be some exciting times working with. The Broadlawn's on this and when, when it's appropriate, I'd like to move item sixty-seven. Thank you.
Alright, Joe.
Mayor, thanks. I just want to say thanks to Scott, Nick. And the department heads for putting together a, a, a balanced budget that we can keep our tax levy. At the lowest rate that it's been in the last fifteen years. Good job. Hopefully, as we get through post-COVID and maybe with some more CARES Act, we'll look at next year of lowering that levy. Rate, Scott, and maybe increasing a few of the CIP depending on how the federal dollars shake out. So. Thank you for answering the questions, getting the stuff done that you all needed to get done, and I'm very supportive of this budget. And I'm glad that Carl moved it forward.
Alright, Josh.
Thank, uh, thank you, Mayor. And, and I too want to, want to thank Scott and Nick and. All the folks in the department who. Worked so hard on the, the budget process and answered a lot of questions and spent a lot of time. Working, working with us on this budget. I wanted to talk about. A, a couple different pieces that, that I think have already been mentioned, but that I'm. Particularly appreciative are, are able to be funded out of, out of this budget. One is Cure Violence. I, I think that's a really important program. I'm glad we got through the assessment process and, and I think. We continue to see the need for, for programs like Cure Violence that, that treat violence like a public health. Issue and use community-based interventions. And so I'm eager to see that program implemented in Des Moines. And I'm hopeful that that will prove successful in our community. And I'm glad that, that we have the space in this budget to fund that. The other piece, and, and I really want to give Connie a lot of credit for helping move this forward is. Efforts on, on the mental health side of, of public safety. And. I know she worked really hard to get, to secure funding for making the mobile health crisis unit twenty-four-seven. And that is a step forward, and I'm glad to see that in this budget. I'd like to see us, and, and I know we've started the process of looking. Holistically at the, the calls that come in. And, and how we can respond, and, and in some cases, better respond by matching the need of that call. Whether it be mental health or a welfare check and providing. Providing responses that, that match that need. And, and some of that is effectively filtering at the front end and then. The other piece we need to do is, is to match the service, whether it, it be mental health or social worker. And I know we're continuing to look at that. I'm hopeful that we can have a. A workshop on that in the near future and that we can continue to make progress on that. And I know that there. Is, is some flexibility in this budget to keep working towards solutions like that. So I'm appreciative of this. I know the, the budget's a lot larger than, than those issues, but I particularly wanted to highlight those couple of things and. I am appreciative of all the work that's gone into this.
Alright, let's quickly go to our attendees. It looks like we've got a few hands up. Let's start with Indira.
Hi, Indira, she/her. Okay, so we're talking about the upcoming budget. I want to acknowledge that the police are thirty-eight percent of the general fund. That is an increase of three million from last year. The police and fire take up sixty-two percent of the budget. Police take up thirty-eight percent of that budget. Um, and I just want to acknowledge that forty-three percent of that could be completely eliminated with the patrol department. That is completely unnecessary. Of three hundred and sixty-two sworn officers, two hundred and three are on patrol. We know that broken windows policing doesn't work. We know that all it does is increase crime and increase harm to black and brown communities. So that whole thing needs to be cut. You guys are talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars going into mental health. That's wonderful. Police should not be involved in that. You're talking about hundred thousand dollars going to cure violence. Police should not be involved in that. But then you're talking about millions, multi-million dollars, tens of millions of dollars going to things that we don't need to be paying for. It is inflated. It is like literally strangling the rest of the budget. The fact that you guys have to fight for mental health funding and it's not even nearly enough. The fact that y'all are not addressing the actual needs, like housing, like food deserts, like anything that is actually causing harm in this.
Amanda Morton.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Alright, I just want to state for the record again, that public comment was not allowed. Like, public input wasn't allowed for this budget. We weren't given the opportunity to express how we feel. We submitted questions, but they weren't taken seriously. Moving on, we could go ahead and eliminate the neighborhood-based service delivery program within the DMPD. That is two million, two hundred ninety-seven dollars. Right there. That, that program is not necessary. The Office of Professional Standards is not necessary. That's another five hundred thousand dollars. We can eliminate. They don't do anything. They don't protect the public at all. So we don't need that. They have Dana Winger to protect them. Bison Narcotics can be eliminated. That's twelve million dollars alone. Legalize all drugs. We don't need to be penalizing folks who are. Addicted to drugs. We need to be helping people, like you guys kind of just stated about mental health issues. I don't know, the detective section is iffy to me. I don't think that they solve as many crimes as one of those racist individuals decided to try to spew. Weird facts.
Brad.
Hello, Brad, he/him. Want to uplift the comments previously made by Indira. I thought she did a really good job of. Yeah, laying just like kind of what's at stake for us every time we decide to give more money to DMPD. Also, Connie Boson, I do appreciate your remarks regarding mental health. Crisis response and stuff like that. That's really good. I'm just wondering, with this three million dollar budget increase going to DMPD. For twenty twenty-two. I'm wondering how much more we could have done regarding mental health response. And caring for these, these people in our neighborhoods, in our communities that are in crisis, instead of getting, giving more money, excuse me. To DMPD who are like in the midst of several high-profile public cases right now and really just draining more money. From our community that desperately needs to be going towards things like mental health, towards things like.
Jalen Kellinette.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Really just want to uplift what all the other speakers have said previously, especially Indira. So on point, shout out to you, Indira. You are so fierce and so smart, much smarter than Bill Gray. As it pertains to this budget, I will just say that, again, this is wholly unacceptable. You all are expanding the police budget. So, you know, Carl Voss and Josh Mandelbaum and Connie Boson. Everything that y'all said is all fine and dandy, yes, but you are still giving more money to the police. After they have been violent, after they have been breaking the law, after they have been forcing us, the taxpayers, to pay out millions of dollars in settlements, you are rewarding them. You are giving them more money. There is no punishment. There is no accountability. Once again, there should be no increase in the police budget. It must be reduced. Any budget that increases the police dollars is wholly unacceptable. I will say this again. You all cannot expand the police budget. It must go down. This is for the safety and the well-being of everyone in our community. If you care about everyone in our community, you will listen to the people who are speaking and you.
Adam Kellinette.
Oh, my name is Adam. I use he/him pronouns. Wanted to touch on a few things. I kind of want to pick up where, where Jalen left off, uplifting Jalen and Hannah Dyer and everybody's comments really. But it's, it's worth remembering that it was exposed that the Goldbraid Police Union sent threatening letters to council. Also, we know the bring-out refused to work with the marijuana task force. And it seems a good place, if, you know, if we have to, for some reason, increase the police budget by three million. We could use that to somehow negotiate with them and say, hey, you know, maybe we'll give you three million if you actually like follow our rules. But like Jalen said, there is no accountability. There's no line item for even the low standard of just like, hey, maybe we'll give you money if you listen to us. That doesn't even exist here. Either that, or you actually like everything the police has been doing, police have been doing, even when they publicly threaten and publicly. Question your power. Yeah, also want to touch on that Connie said some, some really great things that the city's doing. It feels like when great things like that happen, the public is almost never involved, though. When we build these great community solutions, we should really be involving the public so we come to really the best outcome, because people know the solutions they need.
Time.
Bridget Peterson.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Alright, Bridget, she/her pronouns. Um, yeah, I, I just basically want to echo and uplift what everyone else has said. Particularly Indira. I want money taken away from the police department. I do not want more money given to the police department. Yeah, I, I can't think of. Anything else that hasn't already been said, but I grew up in Linda Westergaard's ward. I currently now live in Bill Gray's ward, and every community I've ever lived in in Des Moines has been overpoliced. I grew up low income, so I have seen the effects of an over-militarized. Police force descending on my community, not to make anyone feel safer, but to criminalize poverty. I'm sick of it, and I would so much rather this money go to addressing the root causes of criminal behavior and restorative justice. Not further criminalization of poverty and black. In the city.
Eva.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, it's Ava. I use she/her, they/them pronouns. Um, it's interesting. So obviously, I want to uplift and echo. Pretty much everything that has been said so far about defunding police, not giving them any more money. But I find it interesting that both Josh and Connie mentioned mental health so much. Because I think it's really important to fund mental health services, but I also think that going hand-in-hand with that means decreasing. The amount of contact that citizens have with police officers. So I know that if you talk to me or any of my. Close community members that were brutalized and attacked and traumatized by DMPD this summer. That wasn't good for our mental health. So I think giving them three hundred, or three million more dollars for twenty twenty-two is not. Representative of good mental health practices. So that we, they should have less money, less power, less contact with all citizens of Des Moines. Thank you.
Freedom.
Hi, yeah, um, I have a question about the recommended twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year budget. So the only budget I can find with the departmental summary is, it still has the. City spending almost seven hundred and nine hundred thousand dollars on the SRO program. That program has not been utilized fully since the schools shut down last spring, about a year ago. So total, this, this budget within DMPD for the SROs is one point five million. Half of that comes from the DMPS, the public school system here, and they have decided to cancel that contract with the city because. You know, the schools recognize that police officers in schools traumatize children, criminalizes children. It doesn't provide anything for school safety. So I'm wondering where that seven hundred and nine hun- seven hundred and nine hundred thousand dollars is going now within DMPD?
Emily.
Hi, Emily, she/her's. Um, so I would like to echo what everyone else said and further zero in on the point that both councilperson Mandelbaum and Bowson were willing to talk about the positives in public health initiatives. And then when they're in the position of power to vote, to give them more money and to take money away from DMPD, which if you know that those public health initiatives work better, then you know that DMPD does not work for those situations. So why are you sitting in a seat of power and voting to give DMPD more money every chance you get? It doesn't make any sense. And if you're gonna boast about public health initiatives, actually vote like you mean it. Thank you.
Denver.
Hello, Denver, she/her pronouns. Um, I, if you compare to the last year's police budget, police used thirty-three million dollars on patrols, ninety percent of patrols for which were due to mental health. Um, police are not trained in dealing with mental health. They actually have been trained in kilology training, which trains police officers to use force and not be afraid to use a gun or to strangle people. Or like with me, they used batons and maced me and beat me to the point where I thought I was going to die. I now have to pay two hundred dollars out of pocket a month for, uh, therapy, and that doesn't include my bills for going to the doctor after that happened to me. Um, and just imagine what we could do if we diverted that money from police and actually did something with mental health. You talk so highly about mental health, um, but it's not, it's, it doesn't matter if you're not going to take money from the police department because they terrorize our communities. And, um, that is all. I just want you to listen.
Adrian.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I just wanted to say, I think it's great that, you know, all of these people did so much work on the budget and, uh, your, the government. But, you know, the corporation and our government unfortunately starts way down the line, and that's why this budget does not at all reflect what anyone in this city actually wants. Uh, we can't give more money to the police because, you know, an extra three million dollars that they're getting from the budget, uh, this year. And also, they shouldn't even be getting like most of the money that they're getting, but you decided to give them an extra three million could be helping the people in the community so much more than giving that money to the police. All they do is terrorize the community. They're literally a mob who threatens council members. I don't know why you give them more money. They don't listen to you, so why are you giving them any money at all? You know, when your dog poops on the carpet, you don't reward it and then ask it to like go poop in more places, which is exactly what you guys are doing right now. You're rewarding your dog for pooping in the middle of the carpet. Uh, this budget needs literally an entire overhaul. You need to vote no on it and completely redo it because it doesn't reflect the will of the people of Des Moines at all. So you need to change it. You need to redo everything, probably fire everyone in the government and just redo all of that too, because it's all terrible.
Molly.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Molly Arnt. I use, uh, they/them and she/her pronouns. Um, yeah, I just wanted to uplift everything that's been said. I agree with it. Um, I'm really, really disturbed by the lack of, uh, you taking into account the public comment that's been going on at these meetings regularly for months and months. Um, also, I'd just like to point out, uh, similar to what Emily was saying, like, you all talked about the importance of mental health and why we have these mental health units instead of the police, which means that you know that it's extremely dangerous to send police out on those calls. And if that's dangerous, why can't you admit that they're a danger to the public as a whole? You clearly know that the police are dangerous and that they are violent and that they cannot be trusted with the public. So why are you giving them more money? It doesn't make any sense. Like, you're contradicting yourselves with this. Like, I support, I support the mental health units. I think that's great, and I think we need to be doing more of that. But how can you sit here and give the police more money than you have been giving?
Jacob.
Hi, uh, this is Jake. I use he/him pronouns. Um, yeah, I wanted to echo what a lot of people have said, especially Molly, Bridget, and Dira. So cops can't help us when we're dealing with poverty, when we're living on the streets. We don't have permanent housing. These mental health issues stem from all of that, and cops can't help us. In fact, they're killing us. And that's why we get on these calls every other week, every other week to tell you that this budget, this process was not, uh, inclusive. It was a presentation to us telling us what our tax money was going to go towards. And clearly, what that is, is to maintain the status quo, which is some people who are wealthy and well-off and the rest of us struggling to make ends meet. This budget is racist, it's elitist, and it's out of touch.
Melissa.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, um, I just wanted to ask a question that's been posed a few times tonight, and you guys are, I don't know, missing it or avoiding it, but I would like to know how the removal of SROs from Des Moines Public Schools affects the budget. I want to see what changes are made. Um, that's one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, that's no longer being spent for SROs, so what are we spending on? Um, I know that fifty percent of that was being paid to the city by DMPS, but the other fifty percent of that is, what are we gonna do with that? Um, I think it's also really strange that all of the council members were thanking the finance department for doing their job. Um, and you didn't even do it well. You didn't include public comment. You didn't engage the public in this conversation. It's almost as if you're only listening to the two racist elderly white women that call in every meeting.
Time.
Chris.
Yeah, I'd like to, um, uplift the previous comments as well. Uh, my name is Chris. I use he/him pronouns. Um, I'd also like to, um, express my disappointment in this upcoming budget. Um, as we've heard many times and seen many times, uh, DMPD has proven, uh, their violence and racial discrimination over and over, um, and continue to only get rewarded. And not only could we not pass the citizen review board, um, and now we're giving them more money, which doesn't make any sense. Um, we could be well using that three million for much better places. Um, one night Connie mentioned mental health, uh, housing assistance, um, and as Indira, uh, expertly mentioned, um, well, I'm sorry, smartly mentioned that we should be looking at these food deserts and, um, looking to help food insecurity and food instability in our communities. Um, and how about opening a twenty-four hour warming station or doing what we can to, uh, help individuals stay out of these?
Oliver.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Oliver Wyline. Um, I am actually a resident of Iowa City, Iowa, but I listen to these meetings because I think Des Moines can set a precedent for a lot of what goes on around the state. Um, and I hear a lot of talk about mental health and these, uh, crisis response teams, which is really, really good. Um, because I myself, um, I am a, a direct support professional. I work with people, um, who have maladaptive behaviors. I specialize in autism. Um, and these are the exact type of people who would be mistakenly contacted by police officers instead of a crisis team. And the biggest thing that I I stay up at night thinking about this, I, it really makes me lose sleep, is my number one fear of a police officer, even in Iowa City, harming, uh, one of the people that I work with. And that is a sentiment of so many people that work in my position. And I think it's just, you know, having a police officer even go with a crisis team is a complete, uh, it 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 completely defeats the purpose and misses the point because they're the people that will kill the people I work for, and they're the people that will harm the people I work for, and I think it's really disgusting and slapping.
Uh, Louise.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks, I'm Louise. I live here in Des Moines, he/him pronouns. Um, just wanted to, yeah, uplift and echo the comments that were made about defunding the police. Um, I wanted to, I guess, kind of share about the needs that I'm seeing in in my community and the people that I'm around here in Des Moines. And it's clear to me that we have a, a health crisis, um, not only with COVID, but also with mental health and addiction. And I think that we should stop criminalizing, um, people who use drugs and instead offer, you know, other ways to, um, help our community be healthier, um, which, you know, would include getting rid of police officers who are harassing people and trying to find drugs and and pulling people over because they look suspicious. Like, that's, that does not help at all, and it does not make our community safer. Um, they kept you from decriminalizing or doing anything really with the, with the marijuana task force.
Time.
Right, looks like our, uh, last speaker that, uh, hasn't spoken is Debbie. Debbie Howell.
Hi, I guess I'm one of those old ladies that are racist. Um, I'm sorry, really, this is getting ridiculous. Um, thank you, Connie, for bringing up about the Crisis Center. We used to have that, but I don't think it was twenty-four hours. Um, and it is important. I'm glad that we're gonna have that. Uh, but police officers do make the initial visit with the Crisis Center, at least they used to, because you don't know what they're they're coming up against. So let's try to get along. I mean, how can the, you expect the, um, people to listen to you when you call them names? And as some wise person once said, speak the facts, not your feelings. There's a lot of feelings going on around here and not a whole lot of facts. And.
All right, looks like we have, this is the last speaker. We've got, uh, Lay Waller.
Hi, uh, this is Leah. I use she/her pronouns. Um, I just wanted to express some concerns for, um, citizen Deborah. Um, it's past your bedtime. Go drink some water. Good night.
All right. Back to the council. Uh, did we have a motion on the budget?
Yeah, Carl moved it, I think.
All right, Carl, thank you. Uh, would you pull the council, please?
County.
Yes.
Bowson.
Yes.
Voss.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Westergaard.
Yes.
Mandelbaum.
Yes.
Got him.
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, let's note that it's eight oh five and that's, uh, ends our hearings. Let's go back now to, um, our next speaker. I think it's Matthew Little Smith.
Okay, you can hear me, I bet.
I hope so, yes.
Hello, I'm Matthew Little Smith, and I'm with Iowa Racial, Iowa CCI's Racial Justice Team. And we know that State Legislature Brad Zahn has sponsored Senate Study Bill One Two Two Six on Controlled Substances. And we know that black men and women are being targeted and arrested disproportionately, seven point three percent more than white men and women. It is a problem. It continues to be a problem. And we would like to know what the city council is going to do to advocate for the marijuana task forces recommendations. Or have you just washed your hands of it? We will send a follow-up email to council members tomorrow and expect a response by Friday, March twelfth. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor. Hey.
Yeah.
May I, I believe, uh, I, I think it's just worth clarifying. I think we've registered, uh, it on a number of the marijuana-related legislation consistent with the task force, but, uh, it, if maybe Scott could clarify that real quick.
Yeah, we absolutely have registered, uh, in support of the last two bills that we've seen come through. I guess I don't have the specific in from me.
Sorry, I I believe you're right, uh, Josh, that that we have, we've registered in support. Uh, I have a note here that, uh, earlier it looked like Brenda McDonald wasn't able to be on, but I'm seeing that she is on. So why don't we see if, uh, we can get Brenda, uh, up to speak?
Can you hear me?
Yep, Brenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm the normal. I, I believe we need the police department. Um, we have a great police force. They do their job. They do their jobs well. No, they did not prevent the shootings, but thank goodness they were there to arrest the evil people that did shoot a two-year-old in the head. That is just sad that the society has gotten to that point. That poor mother and father of that little boy. We should be concerned about what's happening in our streets with the youth and what we can do to get them out of where they're at. And earlier, when you were talking about, um, the building and expanding, um, a caller mentioned the rich people that lived over there. You know, those rich people, they work hard. They probably worked very hard at their job and saved very hard to have what they have. And it's no one's right to take that away from anyone just because someone else doesn't have it. I guess I'm done. Thank you.
It looks like, I think that earlier we called on Molly Arnt, uh, but she was unable to get on at that time. Let's give Molly a chance now if she is still on. Molly?
Hi, yeah, um, this is Molly. All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I actually prefer they/them pronouns. Um, so if you could get those right in the future, that would be cool. Um, yeah, so I live in Ward One, and I guess I just wanted to ask council like a very serious question today. Why don't you want to use your power to listen to your constituents and make the city a better place to live? This is such a beautiful community. It's a beautiful city, and there are so many dedicated people who work hard to help their neighbors and organize against injustices. And there shouldn't be this many problems because instead of providing housing for our houseless neighbors, council will build a parking garage built with nepotism and wasted tax dollars. And instead of youth programs and community safe spaces, council builds a stadium that nobody wants. Instead of cheap public utilities, council gives us exorbitant bills for Mid-Americans corporate coal. And instead of reparations for years of racist zoning, racial profiling, and violence against black people, council uses tax dollars to pay for the legal bills of the cops who attack and arrest activists and journalists. The Des Moines Police Department exists to uphold white supremacy and enact violence on our black indigenous, queer immigrant, and poor neighbors. And instead of this violence, we could have real community safety. You need to defund DMPD and be accountable for the harm you have caused. We need our city council to care about the safety and well-being of the people that live in this city because we are facing so many challenges. The pandemic is far from over. We haven't even begun experiencing the full breadth of the economic, mental, and physical health crises it has caused. With climate change, the climate catastrophes like the derecho or the polar vortex are only going to get more and more dangerous. People are struggling so much and yet remit with hostility and violence over and over again for simply asking.
All right, uh, is Viola Perry still on? There she is. Viola, you're on.
I'm ready. Uh, council members, Viola Perry, Des Moines CCI Racial Justice Team. Now, look, this is the follow-up from the twenty eighteen Racial Profiling Ordinance with Community Input presented to the council with six key points. Now, in twenty nineteen, the Racial Justice Team and community members consistently pushed for the passing of the Profiling Ordinance. With twenty twenty, in the wake of the horrific murder of George Floyd, you, council members, did some type of action on a few points of the ordinance. Now, 2021, the Racial Justice Team understand that a Scott Law of Drake University is providing implicit bias training for DMPD. But, but who? Who is providing that de-escalation training for DMPD? Now, we will be sending a follow-up email tomorrow to council for this information on who's doing that de-escalation training. And we expect a response by March 12th. Good evening.
Alright, Endira. There you go.
Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yeah, great. Okay. So y'all just passed this budget, uh, which we knew you would. And it is very clear to, I believe, everybody on this call, even those who don't agree with our viewpoints, that y'all have zero imagination about what the city could be. Just by looking at the categories on the budget, we can see that y'all are not imagining new systems. You are not responding to the fact that we are in an enormous crisis that is changing our day, like our daily lives for pretty much the rest of our generation. Nothing is going to be the same and y'all have not changed a single thing. You're staying with overfunding a police department. You say, I asked specifically, like, what citizen or resident or constituent input have y'all taken and put into this budget? Because I know you aren't listening to those of us who you don't deem articulate. You aren't listening to those of us who don't have some kind of corporate interest. You say, oh, we sent a couple hundred thousand dollars over there. We sent $24,000 over there for like sidewalks and parks and things like that. But when we're talking about completely like changing the things based on the needs of the people in the city, you don't listen and you don't care. Y'all are literally so irrelevant. People like have needs in this city that you are not meeting. And yet you take our money. You take money of property owners in this city and then you give that to things that property owners don't want, that don't help us. People are struggling. People are dying. We had a year of no help from you. That's all that I have to say. Y'all need some imagination. Thank you.
Jack Groper? I don't see Jack. Peyton. Is Peyton on? There she is.
Hi, I'm right here. Uh, I just wanted to have a couple of comments. Um, first, I want to talk about the odor control thing. Uh, it was on the meeting before. Um, so yeah, anyone who's been to any of these city council meetings, who, you know, we don't need a special training to smell uh, dog poop since we get served it every two weeks at these meetings. Um, and then next, I want to talk about conflict of interest, uh, that you guys talked about earlier. Um, all of you are corrupt and you should all resign if it's such a problem for you to not be able to increase your family's wealth with new contract, conflict of interest rules. Uh, next, item 53 on this agenda, I emailed all of you about it, uh, the parking garage. You just approved prices for that parking garage to uh, charge the public to park there when you already charged us basically because you took all of our tax money to pay for it because of your incompetence to not, you know, like, have people build it correctly or whatever is going on there. Uh, so really, that should have been a free garage for everyone since you already made us pay for it with our tax money. So I don't know why you approved that. The next thing I wanted to say was there's gonna be like some kind of horse fair at the fairgrounds that's not gonna have any masks. And I was pretty sure we had a mask mandate in the city, but I guess it's just not enforced because, you know, we have a ton of indoor events with no masks on. So if you could actually just like do something different, check the people who live here, that would be great. Uh, next, I want to talk about um, the Des Moines Register article. County uh, said something was on record lying about basically the council rules. Um, saying that it depends on how many people sign up to speak and that like gives us our speaking time. But really, that only started after uh, BIPOC started getting on the meeting and you changed the rules to make it that way. So I really think you should have said something about that. Um, then last, the police budget, obviously you just approved that. You really shouldn't have approved any of that budget because as I said, it was all terrible. Um, you take money, you take money away from the police because they clearly only use that money to terrorize people. Um, and we've already heard.
Alright, Justin Lewis.
Present. Can I get, how, how, how much time do we have? We have a minute and 30?
Minute and 45.
Minute and 45. Can I get 30-second warning? So just, so I can hit these key points?
You're running.
Oh, am I going now? Oh, gosh. Okay. Um, alright, so uh, good morning, or no, good afternoon. Uh, I wanted to talk specifically about equity in our city government and increasing citizen involvement. This was early at the start of this meeting, but it seems like even more timely. Uh, I would really like to a- ask and speak to increasing the speaking time. I know this may create marathons, meetings that can be uh, long and tiresome. But I'm a big believer that uh, data comes from the citizens when we, they are being, uh, when they're given criticism and uh, our leaders are being scrutinized. And that really, really needs to be addressed. We need to extend these uh, public comments to at least five minutes so that people can feel comfortable when they're speaking. Right now, I, I feel anxious because I, I can't spill all my key points. And most people don't get comfortable with public speaking until 30 seconds in. So we really need to expand that out. Also, pushing the start times back uh, to maybe even uh, 6 or 5, uh, 5, 5 to 6 o'clock uh, PM. One, I have a young family. Uh, I actually miss all, all the time with my children today because I've been sitting on the meeting wanting to speak and, and address some of these things where uh, working families uh, and, and working folks could be able to attend and be involved with their government. Uh, and then also, I wanted to talk about also streaming these, these um, meetings on social media platforms as the world is growing closer towards uh, uh, live video and live streaming. We need to make sure this is constantly accessible, not just through a YouTube link. Uh, and then finally, I want to talk about.
Okay, Deborah Howell. There you go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Deborah.
Hello?
Hello.
This is Deborah Howell. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Well, I'm going to assume that you can. And I'm going to try my hardest to speak very quickly because as noted before, we are five hours past my bedtime. I took a second now and it is ripping through my system.
Mayor, I highly doubt that's Deborah Howell.
Okay, I think we're done. Could, could we have a motion to receive and file our comments?
All move to receive and file item 54A through Q.
Alright, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Alright, any opposition? Hearing none. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Want to thank all of our citizens for their attendance. Want to thank council members for your patience and also for staff and your hard work this year. Uh, we're heading into uh, uh, 2021. Uh, hopefully uh, given uh, a hopefully lessening in the pandemic and, and the vaccines that are in place that, uh, that we're gonna move into a, a year where we'll get back to a little bit of normal. So, uh, thank you all again. Uh, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.